Yes, so it is. But the mics are locked.
We get going next time.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Good morning. I'd like to please call this meeting to order. Time is 9:27. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the State Board of Education has caused notice of the meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Department of Education, Secretary of State's office, and notice has been given to the State House Press Corps and the Governor's office and the State Board Agenda subscribers. As a quorum is present, this meeting will now come to order. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Abstentions? We have two abstentions. All right. Thank you. This meeting will come to order. Thank you so much, and we will be back as soon as executive -- so I'll go into executive session now. Whereas, in order to protect the personal privacy and avoid situations wherein the public interest might be disserved, the Open Public Meetings Act permits public bodies to exclude the public from that portion of a meeting at which certain matters are discussed. Therefore, please be it resolved that consistent with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B, the State Board of Education will now adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. May I please have a motion? Thank you. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we'll be back after executive session. Thank you so much. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. D. I'd like to again thank Honorable Judge Logi to be here to administer the oath of offices to our newest Board members, Ms. Mary Bennet and Ms. Jeanette Pena. Ms. Bennet resides in Irvington, Essex County. She is an educator with extensive experience teaching in university and school settings, including community-based agencies and not-for-profit organizations. Her term will expire June 30, 2024. Mary Bennet's aunt, Helen Bruton, is... I'm sorry, can you stand up? Mary, who I understand is a great baker, and her cousin Cynthia Bruton, if you'll stand up, thank you, are here today to witness this swearing-in ceremony. Ms. Pena resides in Union City, Hudson County. She is the... Well, we'll wait. We'll wait. All right. And our judge, our honored judge is here, Judge Logi. If you would be so kind, sir, we're very honored to have you with us today. Thank you for making time in your schedule.
My pleasure. Do I need a microphone?
Would you like mine, sir?
I think I can project this as long as you could be...
I can help.
Swear or affirm. I guess you'd like to swear.
Your Honor. Your Honor.
Okay, perfect. For purposes of reporting.
So I...
Mary G. Bennet.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially...
And justly perform...
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office...
All the duties of the office.
Of member of the State Board of Education.
Of members of the State Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, welcome. We're very excited for future contributions. And now, I have the pleasure of introducing Ms. Jeanette Pena. She resides in Union City, Hudson County. She is the Educational Director of Special Education and Organizational Accountability with the Union City Board of Education. Ms. Pena is also a trained school psychologist and adjunct faculty member at the Hudson Community College. Her term will expire June 30, 2028. Jeanette Pena's husband, Mr. Rual Diaz, is here. Thank you. And is here to witness this swearing-in ceremony. Again, our Judge Logi is with us today, and thank you again for coming. We look forward to the swearing-in ceremony about to take place again.
Second. Yes.
Right hand. Raise your right hand. Very good. I...
I. Jeanette Pena.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
And the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially...
And justly perform...
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office...
All the duties of the office.
Of member of the State Board of Education.
Of members of the State Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. D. I'd like to again thank Honorable Judge Logi to be here to administer the oath of offices to our newest State Board members, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you. Judge Logi is with the Supreme Court of New Jersey. Very busy gentleman. Supreme. All right. So, welcome, ladies. I don't know if you'd like to take a moment and introduce yourselves, but we'd love to have that opportunity for each of you. Maybe Ms. Bennet, you could begin. Thank you.
Good morning. President Goldberg.
Good morning, President Goldberg, Acting Commissioner McMillan, and all members of the State Board of Education. I want to thank Governor Murphy and express my gratitude for my home county senators Ruiz, Burgess, retired Senator Cody, and former Senator Gill for their support of my nomination. This is an honor and a responsibility that I do not take lightly. As I look at those assembled here this morning, I am humbled and appreciative. You brave, bone-chilling cold and icy roads to be here today. Thank you, everyone, family, friends, and colleagues. I will serve with sincerity, professionalism, and utilize my five decades of experience that I bring to this role on behalf of all of the children in the public schools in the state of New Jersey. Every child is important, and providing the most thorough education possible for every child is the individual and collective responsibility of this board. I look forward to working collaboratively and diligently with my colleagues to accomplish this. I thank you.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Pena, if you would like to speak.
Thank you so much. I'm going to be honest, I didn't prepare anything. I didn't realize that I would be asked to speak, and I thank you for this moment. I'm very humbled to be here today. It's... I'm still kind of pinching myself. I can't believe I'm actually here, but I would be remiss if I did not thank Governor Murphy for his nomination, for chairman, Senator Brian P. Stack for his support in this nomination process, my family, and all my friends, and everyone that has supported me and led me to this point in my life. So, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to getting to work.
Thank you. As President, I can honestly say we're so happy to have you two join us, and all of us are here as a resource at any time that you need, and we're grateful to you for taking on this awesome role. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at this time?
Love to say welcome. We're so happy to have you, fresh perspective. There's... This is an amazing opportunity. It's a lot of work, but, boy, you know, it's wonderful to think that we can collaborate and do the very best for the children of New Jersey so well.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Berry. Anybody else?
Commissioner? Thank you.
Thank you, President Goldberg, and good morning. How exciting for us to have new perspectives on the board with your vast experience. I know that our board is in good hands, and this is my final meeting, but I look forward to serving as a resource through my remaining days for both of you.
Thank you. Okay. We're not going to talk about you...
No.
...in your final day just yet. So, I'd like to announce formally that the State Board meetings are accessible to the public viewing on the YouTube channel, and advise you that YouTube provides readily accessible language translation options with closed captioning. If you're viewing this simulcast currently, you can use the settings option in YouTube for information about subtitles and translations and closed captioning in multiple languages. And now, we'll continue with the approval of the minutes. Our board minutes from December 6 were sent to all of us. May I please have a motion to accept them at this time?
Motion.
Thank you. I believe Mary Beth Berry was first. May I please have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Are there any corrections or changes at this time on our minutes from December 6? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. Any extensions? Thank you. Duly noted. We have two extensions. The State Board will receive public testimony on second discussion level amendments next month to Chapter 22, student residency, and proposal level amendments to Chapter 3, controversy and disputes. In addition, the State Board has also scheduled open topic public testimony, meaning any registered member of the public may provide written testimony on any educational topic of choice. The board members scheduled to participate in public testimony in January have changed around a little bit due to travels and various things, but Dr. Ron Butcher, Dr. Ned Johnson, Board Member Mary Beth Berry, Board Member Mary Bennet, and I will stay to hear public testimony today. For the month of February, the Board will receive public testimony on second discussion level amendments to Chapter 12, inter-district public school choice, and Chapter 23A, fiscal accountability. All right. Now, we'll go ahead at this time and have the State Board permanent student representative who led us in our pledge of allegiance so well. This is our representative to the Board, Nilly Goche, a junior at West Windsor Plainspur High School North in Mercer County. Nilly is accompanied today by her advisor, Mr. Matt Gore. Matt, would you please... He's not here today. Uh-huh. Ms. Newberry, would you please? Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. I understand that you have some remarks to share with the State Board members and the public today. When you are ready, please offer your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, President Goldberg. Good morning, and happy new year to everyone. The new year often brings many changes. For the New Jersey Association of Student Councils, NJASC, the new year brings our annual...
I.
I. Jeanette Peña.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
And the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Of the member of the State Board of Education.
Of the member of the State Board of Education.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D. I'd like to again thank Honorable Judge Logi to be here to administer the oath of offices to our newest state board members.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for coming. Thank you. Judge Logi is with the Supreme Court of New Jersey. Very busy gentleman. Supreme. All right. So, welcome ladies. I don't know if you'd like to take a moment and introduce yourselves, but we'd love to have that opportunity for each of you. Maybe Ms. Bennett, you could begin? Thank you.
Good morning. President Goldenberg.
Good morning, President Goldenberg, Acting Commissioner McMillan, and all members of the State Board of Education. I want to thank Governor Murphy and express my gratitude for my home county senators, Ruiz, Burgess, retired Senator Cody, and former Senator Gill for their support of my nomination. This is an honor and a responsibility that I do not take lightly. As I look at those assembled here this morning, I am humbled and appreciative. You brave, bone-chilling cold and icy roads to be here today. Thank you, everyone, family, friends, and colleagues. I will serve with sincerity, professionalism, and utilize my five decades of experience that I bring to this role on behalf of all of the children in the public schools in the state of New Jersey. Every child is important, and providing the most thorough education possible for every child is the individual and collective responsibility of this board. I look forward to working collaboratively and diligently with my colleagues to accomplish this. I thank you.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Peña, if you would like to speak.
Thank you so much. I'm going to be honest, I didn't prepare anything. I didn't realize that I would be asked to speak, and I thank you for this moment. I'm very humbled to be here today. It's, I'm still kind of pinching myself, I can't believe I'm actually here, but I would be remiss if I did not thank Governor Murphy for his nomination, for chairman, Senator Brian P. Stack for his support in this nomination process, my family, and all my friends, and everyone that has supported me and led me to this point in my life. So, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to getting to work.
Thank you. As President, I can honestly say we're so happy to have you two join us, and all of us are here as a resource at any time that you need, and we're grateful to you for taking on this awesome role. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at this time?
Love to say welcome. We're so happy to have you, fresh perspective. There's, this is an amazing opportunity. It's a lot of work, but, boy, you know, it's wonderful to think that we can collaborate and do the very best for the children of New Jersey so well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Berry. Anybody else? Commissioner?
Thank you.
Thank you, President Goldenberg, and good morning. How exciting for us to have new perspectives on the board with your vast experience. I know that our board is in good hands, and this is my final meeting, but I look forward to serving as a resource through my remaining days for both of you.
Thank you. Okay, we're not going to talk about you.
No.
And your final day just yet. So, I'd like to announce formally that the state board meetings are accessible to the public viewing on the YouTube channel, and advise you that YouTube provides readily accessible language translation options with closed captioning. If you're viewing this simulcast currently, you can use the settings option in YouTube for information about subtitles and translations and closed captioning in multiple languages. And now, we'll continue with the approval of the minutes. Our board minutes from December 6th were sent to all of us. May I please have a motion to accept them at this time? Thank you. I believe Mary Beth Berry was first. May I please have a second? Thank you. Are there any corrections or changes at this time on our minutes from December 6th? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Any extensions? Thank you, duly noted. We have two extensions. The state board will receive public testimony on second discussion level amendments next month to Chapter 22, student residency, and proposal level amendments to Chapter 3, controversy and disputes. In addition, the state board has also scheduled open topic public testimony, meaning any registered member of the public may provide written testimony on any educational topic of choice. The board members scheduled to participate in public testimony in January have changed around a little bit due to travels and various things, but Dr. Ron Butcher, Ned, Dr. Ned Johnson, Board Member Mary Beth Berry, Board Member Mary Bennett, and I will stay to hear public testimony today. For the month of February, the board will receive public testimony on second discussion level amendments to Chapter 12, inter-district public school choice, and Chapter 23A fiscal accountability. All right. Now, we'll go ahead at this time and have the state board permanent student representative who led us in our pledge of allegiance so well. This is our representative to the board, Nellie Goesch, a junior at West Windsor Plainspur High School North in Mercer County. Nellie is accompanied today by her advisor, Mr. Matt Gore. Matt, would you please? He's not here today. Aha. Ms. Newberry, would you please? Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. I understand that you have some remarks to share with the state board members and the public today. When you are ready, please offer your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, President Goldenberg. Good morning and Happy New Year to everyone. The new year often brings many changes. For the New Jersey Association of Student Councils, NJASC, the new year brings our annual. The new year brings our annual winter convention and the transition to a new state officer board. Prior to our winter convention, our usual monthly executive meeting is held for the purpose of conducting interviews and the slating of all future candidates. To summarize, based on a candidate's application and interview, the outgoing state officers decide which office they may be best suited to fulfill. The meeting also serves as an opportunity for potential future officers to observe how a standard exec meeting operates. Additionally, the state officers also review applications and agree upon recipients of NJASC awards to be presented at the winter convention, such as the Honor School Awards, Top 10 Project Awards, and the Student Leader of the Year Award. The NJASC Winter Convention is taking place today, January 17th, at the College of New Jersey. The day begins with campaigning and speeches by the 2024 State Officer Candidates. This is followed by a keynote presentation by Speaker Joe Hilchi, a success coach who specializes in leadership, creativity, and success. After the keynote, there will be three sessions of student workshops. These sessions are led by students across the state. All students can teach anything they like. Workshops can be in-depth explanations of unique traditions or events, or lessons on crucial skills or practices for student leadership, for example, keeping meeting minutes. These student workshops are held every year at winter convention, and they are essential to allowing student leaders across the state to exchange knowledge with each other and help one another grow. At the end of the program, election results will be announced, and the new officer board will be sworn in. I look forward to working with my successor and guiding them through the transition process. My fellow officers and I are currently working on a digital letter and Google Drive folder containing all the information we wish to relay to our successors. Preparing our successors to the best of our abilities is our final duty as state officers. I would also like to share, this past month, I had the opportunity to be interviewed with NJ Spotlight as the Board of Education's student representative for a story on trailblazers in NJ, New Jersey. I was able to share a little bit about myself, my journey in student leadership, my goals in this role as the Board of Education's student representative, and, most importantly, I was able to expand on my report from last month, which contained a message of hope pertaining to the ongoing conflict in the Middle East. I'm deeply grateful to have received such a large platform to spread this message of positivity, and I hope that many can find consolation in it. Finally, with the new year rolling in, I find myself looking forward. Typically speaking, for myself and my fellow high school juniors, the year 2024 means taking major steps towards future life paths, such as college applications, a career, et cetera. For others, this time may entail setting personal or career goals. As such, I wish everybody best in their journeys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a very exciting time that you're beginning, actually, looking at different schools and making big decisions. When will they, so now is when they're having their meeting, and the next? Sure. Thank you.
Registration started at 9:30, and opening session is 11:00, and then, you know, they're going to move throughout the day, and it'll end at 2:30. But because of the weather, I'm sure you guys know, like, a lot of schools were delayed, so we had to push our program forward as well. It was supposed to start earlier, but it's fine, we're adjusting, so, yeah.
Very good. Well, we're honored you're with us today, so, thank you. Any comments about, just, Nellie, I was wondering, will you be able to get to the conference? Are you going from here?
Yeah, I'm, I just, I'm going to leave soon.
Good. Well, good. Then we'll get you on your way. But I would, of course, always like to thank you. I'm glad to hear there's a Google Drive and there's a way for the work that each of you have done, because we've been very fortunate on the board to have other student representatives, and every year, I'm like, how can we get someone better? And you guys are just an amazing representation of New Jersey. So, I really, I'm sure you will certainly help that next young person to come in. We value your opinion, and have a great rest of your conference. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
And one last thing. So, you're a junior. Are you going to be able to run for another office, or are you stepping back and just going to work on college now?
So, the way NJASC is set up is that you can only run once in your high school, timed in high school, because the eligibility requirements switch from North Jersey to South Jersey every year. So, you either run as a sophomore or junior, so I ran as a sophomore. But, yeah, you know, for me and the state officers, our executive advisors, they always tell us, you know, that for us, the goal is to prepare our successor better than our predecessor prepared us. So, I think maybe that helps us to keep, you know, keep the movement going.
Well, good luck to you, and we look forward to hearing where you're going next.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, please, Dr. Butcher.
So, I probably. There we go. I referenced this after, I guess, you go by Nellie?
Yeah.
Yeah. Nellie had had a presentation before us in previous months, and I made a comment that not often do their comments get beyond the board here in the boardroom. And I gather NJ Spotlight picked up on that and took it upon themselves, and rumor has it that following your meeting with them and your presentation, you've not only represented the student council and yourself very well, but we should also be very proud of what you did as members of the state board. And with that, I would like to say congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank. Did you want to, okay, thank you so much. So, Nellie, as always, you are a rock star. You continue to share with us the amazing work that's underway to improve the lives of not only those who are currently with us, but the future. And I love the investment that NJASC continues to make, and I want to just thank you for strengthening my confidence in our next generation of leaders. Well done.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. And now, we'll continue. If you need to leave, we understand.
All right, thank you.
Be safe.
Yes, safe travels.
Okay, and now, we'll continue with our state board of ed reports. We'll begin with our policy committee, who met on December 12th, and Board Member Bobrov, if you could please enlighten us. Thank you.
As President Goldenberg said, we met twice this, can you hear me? Okay. That the policy committee met twice prior to the meeting. The meetings were on December 12th and December 5th. Subject of the agenda of the meeting was Chapter 12, inter-district school choice. This relates to the fact that different schools may have different curricula. For example, School A may offer instruction in Russian and Chinese. Choices. A neighboring School B may not include Russian or Chinese, but has the languages of Spanish and French. If School A has openings for other students in Russian, School A may advertise that they have seat room for additional students. School B has a student who wants to learn Russian and may want to attend School A. If there is room in the class, the parents want their child to transfer to School A. On today's agenda, the Department of Education will discuss the minimal prospective changes to the code policy. The January 5th, 2024 meeting discussed the proposed readoption with amendments fiscal accountability, efficiency, and budgeting procedures to Chapter 23A. The chapter is divided into two parts. Subchapters 1 through 15 are under the Commissioner's authority, while subchapters 16 and 24 fall under the state board's authority. Today, the Department of Education will also discuss prospective changes to subchapters 15 through 24. I would like to take a moment to give some personal remarks, if I may. I thank very much all the members of the Department of Education for all that they've done to work with us in helping us to understand what's happening, to answer our questions, which are many, and to really be in such good spirits, because sometimes it's hard working with people who really don't understand exactly where you're going. The second group I'd like to make note of are the people on the board of the Board of Education, Diane Shoner, and Beth Auswell, and Stephanie Russo. And without them, I don't think the board would be able to handle all the things that are put before us. They keep us on the straight and narrow. And finally, I would like to thank the members of the policy committee for all of their diligent work, because it takes an enormous amount of time to prepare for this kind of a chapter meeting. We, when I first joined, I was told, before I had actually joined the Board of Ed, that it only meets once a month, and so it's really not that much to do. I was teaching at a college at the time and doing other things. And I found out after the first time I got here that that was not quite the truth. And so, we sometimes end up reading hundreds and hundreds of pages between meetings to try to make sure that we understand all of the things that are being put before us. And so, I thank all the members of the board, I mean, of the department, and, of course, Kathy, for what they've done to help us to understand what's going on, which means that we can be better off at understanding how we need to present ourselves as representing the students of New Jersey in the best way possible. And thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you very much, Board Member Bobrov. Okay, so, I think that's the only committee that met, and we will go ahead now and do a resolution, which is quite important, the School Board Recognition Month. If I could please ask Board Member Dr. Ned Johnson to read our resolution, and after the vote, we will have Ms. LaFaye come up, but please.
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me. Whereas the New Jersey State Board of Education has established rigorous standards through its promulgation of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, which set the expectations of academic achievement for nearly 1.4 million public schoolchildren, and whereas New Jersey's locally elected and appointed boards of education play a vital role in ensuring that their local school districts meet state standards and adhere to state and federal education statute and regulations with the goal of preparing all students for college and the workplace, thereby enabling them to compete in a global economy, and whereas New Jersey's 5,000 nonparticiple Boards of Education members and charter school trustees are public servants who dedicate their time without pay or benefit to the oversight of school district operations through sound financial practices and comprehensive policies on curriculum, staffing, and other areas to ensure the well-being and academic achievement of all students in the district. And whereas local school boards, in conjunction with state education officials and local educators, have built a foundation of success that has led New Jersey's status as a leader in student achievement, as evidenced by the National Assessment of Educational Progress scores, and whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2024 to be School Board Recognition Month, now, therefore, be it resolved that the New Jersey State Board of Education recognizes the contributions of our state's local Boards of Education to the academic success of its public school students and expresses its sincere appreciation to local Boards of Education members for their continued focus on the academic achievement of children throughout the state of New Jersey, and be it further resolved that the New Jersey State Board of Education encourages qualified New Jersey citizens to consider serving as members of their local school Boards of Education.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So, we've had the resolution. Could I please have a motion to accept the resolution? Thank you very much. May I please have a second? Second. Are there any comments at this time or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution passes. I'd like to please invite up to speak with us Irene LaFaye and immediate past president, Dr. Timothy Purnell. Executive Director, and New Jersey's, from New Jersey School Boards Association, excuse me, and I'd like to ask you both to come up and accept the resolution and make some remarks with our acting commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just to clarify, my name is Karen Cortolino. I'm the current president of New Jersey School Boards. Irene LaFaye is a dear friend, and she is the past president, immediate past president, and our executive director, Dr. Timothy Purnell, joins us here today. And let me say, we are honored to receive this recognition on behalf of New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members and charter school trustees. I want to express our sincere appreciation to the state board for its support of local Boards of Education. Over the years, there have been many state board members who have served on their local Boards of Education. I'd like to take a moment to recognize their board service as well. State Board President Kathy Goldenberg served on the Moorestown Township Board of Education from 2007 to 2017, and as president of that board from 2015 to 2017, and vice president from 2011 to 2015. Also, Dr. Ned James Johnson was a member of the Pitts Grove Township Board of Education from 2007 to 2010. Sylvia Sylvia Shofy was a member of the Township Ocean, Township of Ocean Board from 2010 to 2017, was vice president of the board in 2013, and president in 2014. And the newest member of the state board, Jeanette Peña, is a member of the Union City Board of Education for two decades and served as its president as well. Like the state board of education, New Jersey's local school boards make critical decisions affecting the education of approximately 1.4 million public school students. Now more than ever, citizens need a voice at the local level. Local school board members who serve without compensation represent the community by ensuring tax dollars are spent wisely and by setting academic goals for school districts. Their work has a positive impact on the classroom. They've helped make New Jersey a national leader in student achievement. I thank the state board for joining New Jersey school boards and recognizing the commitment of local Boards of Education. Together, we are advancing the
Together, we are advancing the quality of public education for all children in New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goldenberg. Thank you.
Board President, if I may, just offer my own personal anecdote here to capture this moment as well. Having served as a local school board member for just one term, I say that proudly because it took everything I had to complete that term. But I've had the good fortune in this role to meet with my colleagues nationally, and I have to say that we are light years ahead of many states with our organization of our board members in our state, and the level of training that's provided, professional assistance, guidance, mentoring, camaraderie. I think that we continue to set the bar nationally, and I tout your association at every opportunity. So I wish you continued success. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I'm very excited as well to extend a special welcome to our next honorees and our special guests that are here, the dedicated educators and the outstanding students that each of you represent. And that's why we are here, and that's why we do what we do, to take the opportunity to celebrate each of your accomplishments. So it's important that we recognize New Jersey's exemplary leaders and administrators, all of you that are here and that are back in the audience. If you're a family member, if you're a district administrator, if you're a superintendent, principal, a friend, a colleague, those who work with students and support any one of our many honorees, please know that we recognize and we appreciate each of you for what you bring to our students within New Jersey and all of the services that you provide that aren't even part of the job description, just because you care. So we thank you. Today, we're going to recognize the recipients of the following awards that are honored in 2023, 2024. May we begin, please, with Superintendent of the Year, the School Business Administrator of the Year next, and the Visionary Principals of the Year. The first recipient we honor today is 2024 New Jersey Superintendent of the Year Award. This award recognizes superintendents who are remarkable educational leaders that have vision, imagination, and above all, the empathy for the students that they serve. Thank you to the New Jersey Association of School Administrators for your commitment for this annual program. It is now my pleasure to ask Mr. Tony Trigone, immediate past president of the New Jersey Association of School Administrators, the NJASA, to introduce the 2024 New Jersey Superintendent of the Year. Mr. Trigone is accompanied by Dr. Richard Baza, executive director, Dr. Michael Sousa. He'll stand so we can all see you. That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Judy Ratner, Director of Special Projects, and Ms. Anne Gallagher, Director of Communications of NJASA. There you are. Thank you. Additionally, in the audience, we have the Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, Ms. Mary Ann Soudel. If you could stand, please. Thank you. Thank you. So, sir, would you like to take the NJASA and Mr. Tony Trigone, and congratulations to Dr. Nicholas Bernice, if you would like to begin speaking?
I would love to do so. Part of my voice, everyone. So thank you, Madam President, and the State Board of Education. Good morning to the New Jersey State Board of Education members, Acting Commissioner Alan McMillan, loved working with you, I put that in there, Angelica, and the New Jersey Department of Ed staff, and to our guests. I would like to present the New Jersey Association of School Administrators, otherwise known as NJASA, selection of the 2024 New Jersey Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Nicholas A. Bernice, Chief Education Officer for the Ringwood School District. Prior to his selection as the New Jersey Superintendent of the Year, NJASA selected three regional 2024 superintendents of the year, and Dr. Bernice was the Region One Superintendent of the Year for New Jersey. The other honorees included the Region Two recipient, Dr. Scott Rubin, the Chief Education Officer for Cranford Public Schools, and the Region Three recipient, Ms. Beth Norcia, Chief Education Officer for the Maple Shade School District. NJASA introduced the three regional superintendents of the year at the annual Fall Workshop in Atlantic City. The selection qualifications for the state and national superintendent of the year include meeting the needs of their students, demonstrated strong communication, a commitment to professional development and growth, and significant community involvement. Additionally, at the state and regional levels, the NJASA has an additional qualification and addresses service with the county affiliate and the state NJASA leadership. The 2024 New Jersey Superintendent of the Year is recognized by the county and the regional superintendent as Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Nicholas Bernice from Ringwood Public Schools, and he is, some of the things that he's done with his leadership is Ringwood is known as winning the New Jersey Schools to Watch principal and a successful high school science teacher. He began his educational career in 1999 as a high school science teacher. During the 22-23 school year, the Ringwood School District recognized the need to rebalance their approach to balanced literacy. Dr. Bernice initiated a phonics committee, which recommended changes to the K3 language instruction. As a result, significant gains were seen on the DIBELS assessment and alphabet knowledge, phonological and phonemic awareness, phonocoding, and fluency. His service as a member of the U.S. Coast Guard Reserve is noteworthy from his participation in the Coast Guard's response to the TAC-1911 in New York City, to most recently in 2022, being selected by the Departments of State, Defense, and Homeland Security to lead the K-12 educational programs for over 1,600 Afghan child evacuees who are living in the safe haven at Joint Base McGuire Dix Lakehurst in New Jersey. Dr. Bernice continues to serve in his current assignment as the Reserve Command Master of Chief for Sector Southeastern New England. AASA, the National Organization for Superintendents, will honor each state representative at the National Conference on Education in February 2024 in San Diego. This prestigious program, now in its 37th year, is sponsored by First Student, Core Bridge Financial, and AASA. It is an honor for me to present through NJASA and to congratulate New Jersey's 2024 Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Nicholas A. Bernice, Chief Education Officer for Ringwood School District, and I now pronounce, I now present it, Mr. Dr. Bernice. Would you come on up? Joining us again, joining us again is our executive director for NJASA, Mr. Dr. Richard Baza, our president, Dr. Michael Lousa, our Director of Special Projects, Judy Ratner, and Mary Ann Soudel, Assistant to Dr. Bernice.
Thank you. Yes, congratulations once again. Well deserved. Absolutely. Yes, good to see you, success. Thank you, Mr. Trigone. And annually, this is presented to an individual who demonstrates leadership and service to the profession and is involved in projects that promote excellence in school business administration. I want to thank the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials for making this program possible, as it remains the hallmark achievement in our field. It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Susan Young, the Executive Director of the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials, to introduce this year's recipient. Ms. Young is accompanied by Ms. Gail Libby, President of NJASBO, and I would invite you both, please, to come up front. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you to the State Board for taking time out of your busy schedule to recognize these amazing people. The business officials are the people behind the scenes, and we are doing our best to be efficient and effective, which is why we brought all three of us up together at once. But I would like to ask Gail Libby, our current year president, to say a few words about our honoree.
Thank you, Sue. Good morning, Acting Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam President, State Board of Trustee members, and to the audience and guests. New Jersey ASBO membership votes for two distinguished service award recipients from each of the three regions of the state, North, Central, and South. From those six winners, the Executive Committee selects our SBA of the Year. Our current SBA of the Year is Amy Lerner. Amy began her school business administrator career in the Avon District in October of 2004, where she is still employed. But this is just one of the two schools that Amy currently wears her BA hat. Amy currently works in the North Hanover Township School District and has been there since 2014. She also has served as the business administrator for the Little Silver Public Schools from 2008 to 2014. Amy's work in North Hanover, however, has been some of the most interesting. Serving a large military demographic, thanks to the close proximity of the Joint Base McGuire Dix Lakehurst, she has worked tirelessly to bring federal funds to her district. Three times a year, Amy travels to Washington, D.C. to advocate for federal funds as part of the NAFIS, otherwise known as the National Association of Federally Impacted Students Organization. Although most public school districts are funded largely through local taxes and fees, North Hanover is different because of the joint base. Federal land is exempt from taxation and as many of the businesses and facilities located on the land. Through federal impact aid funding, Amy has helped bring hundreds of millions of dollars to the district for crucial improvements and projects. For example, Amy, along with her superintendent, wrote several grants, including a $62 million grant to the Department of Defense for the new state-of-the-art elementary school for military students. It was a $72 million project, which replaced three old-school buildings built in the 60s by the Army Corps of Engineers. She also oversaw the implementation of full-day preschool. In her spare time, she has served in the capacity of her counties, served on several New Jersey ASBO committees, and is currently a mentor for new aspiring school business administrators. We are very proud to recognize Amy as our BA of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now it's my pleasure to welcome Ms. Karen Bingert, Director of the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association, to introduce this year's recipient. Ms. Bingert is accompanied by Dr. Mary Reese, Director of Special Projects, Ms. Denise Hektberger, Associate Executive Director, and Mr. Dan Higgins, Director of Strategic Communications of NJPSA. Additionally, in the audience, we have Dr. Robert Clemm, Superintendent of Lawrence Township Public Schools, and Ms. Daniella Buonamo, Mr. Gramata's wife. I now introduce Karen Bingert to you to introduce our two distinguished and deserving recipients. Thank you.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone. President Goldenberg, Acting Commissioner Alan McMillan, members of the Board, thank you so much for this opportunity to come and present to you today two people. I'm incredibly proud to have served New Jersey students as well as to have represent NJPSA. As President Goldenberg said, my name is Karen Bingert. I'm the Executive Director of NJPSA, and I'm honored to be here today to represent or to present two visionary principals. These are truly exemplary leaders. And so without further ado, let me tell you why we think that. Up first is Carlos Gramata. Hillside Elementary School Principal Carlos Gramata is this year's NJPSA Visionary Principal of the Year at the elementary level, as well as NJPSA's candidate for the NAESP National Distinguished Principal Award. Mr. Gramata, a former teacher, ELA coordinator, and assistant principal, has served as the principal of Hillside Elementary School for more than 10 years. He has launched a comprehensive character education program that develops the whole child through service learning. Hillside has twice, not once, but twice, been recognized as a state and national school of character for these efforts, which include a fourth and fifth grade learning partnership with a nearby school for children with multiple disabilities. Community integration and understanding across differences in ability, the program includes sensitivity training using art and adaptive technology. Carlos credits the effectiveness of programs like these to his leadership philosophy of empowering others through peer mentorship, leadership development, and targeted professional support for those closest to impacting student achievement. This leadership style has also produced a culture of data and assessment at Hillside, where Mr. Gramata facilitates thoughtful instructional decisions based on a variety of data sources as leader of the school's multidisciplinary data leadership team. Hillside teachers are curious and confident in their engagement with data, and the school was first in the district to pilot the use of data warehousing and benchmarking software. At NJPSA, we are proud that Carlos is this year's visionary principal. In his words, "If you love children and you want to make a school that is the best place for them, you should be a school principal. It's not going to be easy. It does come with challenges, but if you want to make a difference in a really big way for kids and staff, be a school principal." Ladies and gentlemen, Principal Carlos Gramata, visionary leader. Ladies and gentlemen, Principal Carlos Gramata, visionary leader.
Congratulations. Yes, yes. Please, ah, so good to see you again. How are you? Right, we're gonna let you get in the center. And we're gonna let you get in the center and move over. Yep, 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 that way. Right, how you doing? Good?
I'm taking it off. I don't know if I can. Thank you.
How are we? Thank you again, so well deserved. Continue success.
And as everyone resumes their seats, I would like to point out that NJPSA gets two. Because we have the honor of representing the unique nature of elementary through secondary programming, and so it's now my true pleasure also to introduce Lawrence Middle School Principal Dr. Mindy Malovski as this year's NJPSA Visionary Principal of the Year at the secondary level, as well as NJPSA's candidate for the NASSP Principal of the Year National Level. Dr. Malovski has spent her entire professional career as an educator, first as a teacher, then as the Assistant Principal at Lawrence High School, and for the past 12 years as the principal at Lawrence Middle School. At LMS, Mindy focuses on students' social, emotional well-being, character education, and leadership and community building. Implementing the NJDOE Social and Emotional Learning Competencies, Mindy's goal is to create a school community where everyone feels a sense of belonging. They have a three-house system, Phoenix, Orion, and Draco, that she put into place, which helps students meet their goals and enriches the students' educational experiences. As a result, she has created a climate and culture where school spirit thrives. Throughout school-wide assembly programs and curricular changes, Mindy has made LMS Nation a place where students and staff work together to grow and learn. Dr. Malovski is a true advocate for her students and sets the highest standards for her school community. At NJPSA, we are delighted that Mindy is this year's visionary principal at the secondary level. In her own words, Mindy describes, "The best thing about the field of education is the opportunity to work with kids every day, to see the joy, to see the struggle, to see the confidence, to witness all of the emotions and the successes, and just the greatness, and to be able to be a part of all of that is a privilege." I am also thrilled to share that, effective on March 1st, NJPSA has just selected Dr. Malovski as our new state representative to the National Association of Secondary School Principals with a seat on our own NJPSA Board of Directors. Dr. Malovski.
Congratulations, Mr. Oh, again. Yes. Yes, please, come up. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I just have one final comment, as the President and Acting Commissioner are taking their seats. Again, thank you to the board for taking the opportunity to recognize our principals, the school business administrators, the superintendent. We also, on behalf of NJPSA, Acting Commissioner, want to wish you the best with your retirement. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Binger, very much. Would anyone, if there are people who need to leave and go back to their districts, we understand this is a good time, perhaps, to allow you to do so. Be very safe. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Bye. Take care. And now we'll continue, and I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Acting Commissioner, Dr. Allen McMillan, to say a few words.
Thank you so much, President Goldenberg. It was just an amazing opportunity to acknowledge the talented individuals who've devoted years and decades to our profession, and so it was always great to be in their company. So, again, I just want to acknowledge those individuals and the wonderful associations that also recognize them and assist them day in and day out, so that is truly commendable. So I'd like to say to everyone, I hope you had a joyous holiday season as we enter the start of a new year that is the leap year. In addition to acknowledging that many of the holidays celebrated throughout the month of December included a variety, the Department of Education employees were extremely generous and sent a truckload of gifts for children to the Homefront Family Campus in Ewing. Touring the Homefront Family Campus was a bonus for several staff members, as we learned firsthand how families in nearby communities are supported through their various programs. And I see the smile on faces in the audience of those who were on that wonderful tour. Visiting Barringer High School in Newark later in December to learn about the success and expansion of their career in technical education program that included visiting music production rooms, carpentry shops, and even a mock courtroom set up for students to practice for future careers in the legal field was enriching for our team. In December, we also announced the reissue of the High Impact Tutoring Notice of Grant Opportunity and released the Notice of Funding of Round Two for Preschool Expansion Opportunities. These opportunities are aimed to improve and expand capabilities in the early grades to enhance learning as well as make preschool programs available to more residents. My final campaign as head of this agency began before the holiday break. It is titled "DOE Reads Aloud." Every month, an individual or individuals from our agency will choose a children's book to read aloud for viewing on our YouTube channel by students and their families. I read "The Day the Crayons Quit," a favorite of many at the department, and Rosie Revere "Engineer," both of which are now available online to enjoy as we promote literacy acquisition in all of its forms. This month, I am excited to visit each of the five 2023 Lighthouse Award recipients to congratulate them and celebrate this achievement with their school community. The five local educational agencies are Middlesex County Vocational and Technical School District, Morris County Vocational School District, Palmyra Public School District, Phillips Academy Charter School, and Union County Vocational Technical School District. The five winners are recognized for their outstanding efforts advancing educational improvement and equitable outcomes for students. Reflecting on my three-plus years in this role, I am most proud of the progress of this agency to effectively respond to a public health emergency in ways previously unimagined while simultaneously innovating in each of the seven divisions created with the support of this State Board of Education. Reopening schools, addressing learning loss, enhancing mental health supports, and expanding universal preschool are the tip of the iceberg. The people at this agency, however, represent 80% of the iceberg that you don't see, as it is their tremendous grit to ensure we continually improve and ask others to do the same. My amazing assistant commissioners, who lead the seven divisions within the agency, Dr. Jordan Schiff, Mrs. Kathy Ailing, Dr. Chris Irving, Mrs. Seychelle Onat, Mr. Carrie Booker, Mr. Chris Huber, all synchronized by our dynamic and incomparable Chief of Staff, Dr. Julie Bunn, create a workspace where risks are taken and rewarded. Students' voices remain center stage during my tenure and are memorialized in the 2021 Virtual Student Roundtable recordings that remain on our YouTube channel, which provided us with much-needed insight as we prepare for the full reopening of schools. Coupling this experience with the launch of the Hope Healing and Resilience Through the COVID-19 Pandemic in 2021 and its installation in 2022 was an immense achievement. Before you leave, if you have not viewed the beautiful work that is hung in gallery style, please do so. And if you are watching virtually, I hope you have an opportunity to visit our actual site. Furthermore, students from pre-kindergarten through grade 12 statewide submitted more than 1,400 works of art in response to the showcase call for submissions. Our website contains the art of students received from across New Jersey. The original art is based on the individual student's interpretation of the theme "Hope, Healing, and Resilience Through the COVID-19 Pandemic." Students were encouraged to submit one original piece of two-dimensional art that conveyed a positive message, many of which are displayed today in this room and throughout numerous department offices. Thank you to all the partners whom I've had the privilege to work with during my tenure. We are proof that civility exists and common ground can be achieved if we remain open to listening and learning from one another. It was my pleasure to serve the state of New Jersey at the request of Governor Murphy, and I boldly say that I serve to the best of my ability. I ask you to remember me for reminding us to always go slow in order to go fast. The author is unknown, but I want to make sure attribution is at least acknowledged. And now I make my final request to you. Please like, comment, share, and retweet our social media as we spread awareness of the magnanimous work underway at the Department of Education to better support students, educators, and schools across our great state. And I must say, smash that like button. Thank you all so very much for the opportunity. It's been a pleasure. May I proceed?
I would. Oh, yes.
Thank you. Items for consideration. Item A, appointments. Today I present for your consideration one candidate for appointment. Madam President, I present Michelle "Mickey" Ronan Gross-Turney for the position of Executive Director in the Division of Early Childhood Services. And Madam President, I return the meeting to you for discussion.
Thank you very much. We, in executive, we did have the opportunity to meet and to ask all of our questions. So we've had that already. I would like to go ahead and ask if there was anything further. If not, I'd like to please make a motion to accept Ms. Mickey Ronan Gross-Turney to be put onto our roster officially. So may I please have a motion? Thank you. May I please have a second? Thank you very much. Any other questions at this time, other than you're extremely qualified? We're so grateful. It's my opinion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Please say nay. Any abstentions at this time? Hearing none, welcome officially. You have something to say?
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions? Thank you, two abstentions. Would you like to address us, please? Thank you.
So let's congratulate Ms. Ronan Gross-Turney.
Thank you so much. So thank you, President Goldenberg, and members of the State Board of Education and Acting Commissioner, Dr. Allen McMillan. I'm honored to bring my head start background, my decades of early childhood experience in the nonprofit and public sector, my passion for education and systems, and my love of partnership and collaboration to my new role, and I am honored and excited to serve the children and families of New Jersey. So thank you so much.
And welcome. Yes, thank you, President Goldenberg. Item B, certification of school districts. There are no certi-- there are no school districts to present for certification today. I will move on to item C. Chapter 22, Student Residency, Second Discussion. The student residency rules established in Chapter 22 outline the process for determining which public school or student is eligible to attend free of charge according to New Jersey State Law 18A:38-1. The rules include examples of how a district may determine student residency, how the residency rules apply to students with special circumstances, for example, military or homelessness status, and the procedures to follow when an enrolled student is deemed ineligible for attendance. These rules are set to expire in April of 2024. The proposed readoption with amendments is organized for efficiency and alignment with current laws. Mrs. Onat, Assistant Commissioner, and Mr. Dupree, Director, both in the Division of Finance and Business Services, are here to present an overview of the rulemaking and respond to your questions.
Good morning, President Goldenberg, Commissioner Allen McMillan, and members of the State Board of Education. We're here for the second discussion on Chapter 22, Student Residency Requirements. Thank you. So the purpose, just to recap from last month, the purpose of this chapter is to establish procedures for districts to determine students' eligibility to attend a school district free of charge based on their residency and to establish the process for charging tuition for students who are ineligible for free attendance. These rules include some exceptions for non-resident students to attend a school district free of charge under certain circumstances. And then these rules, we would like to emphasize that they, these sections that we're proposing to change, apply only to parent-paid tuition. They do not apply to tuition charges between school districts. So we have not received any comments after the first discussion from the public regarding the amendments, so there's no additional changes we're proposing today from last month. To summarize the proposed amendments, we're proposing first to implement the new legislation for Chapter 61. So we're removing the language under 2.2 that allows school districts to admit non-resident students free of charge. So we're, and we're repealing 3.2H8 section, which states that a district can admit non-resident students without the payment of tuition. And we're adding a new rule under 2.1 for clarification and consistency. And we're adding a new rule under 2.1 for clarification and consistency only, that a Board of Education must apply its residency requirements in a consistent manner for all students, whether they're enrolled in district schools, charter school, or out-of-district So to clarify our amendments one more time, the amendments align the rules with the newly enacted legislation of Chapter 61. So again, which eliminated a Board of Education's discretion to enroll non-resident students for free and require tuition rates to be uniformly applied. So now we're going to be in alignment with the legislation. And the new law and proposed amendments do not affect the exceptions under this chapter for students a district must allow to attend free of charge. Only students who are not included-- included in the exceptions must pay the tuition. So what are these exceptions for attend-- for free attendance? Non-resident students are eligible to attend a school district tuition free in these circumstances. The first one is students who are eligible under McKinney, Vento, federal law for homelessness and/or displaced students, and students who move out of the district due to a family crisis, students whose parents are ordered into active military service, and students who are placed in the district by DCF, Department of Children and Families, or a court order. So these are the only exceptions that the students can attend free of charge. Districts are permitted, but they're not required to allow free enrollment for students whose parents are employed by the school district. So these are proposed-- are proposed amendments, so we're welcome for any questions you might have.
Thank you. When the-- if I could ask a question, please. When the free enrollment kicks in with the reasons that you very aptly listed, does the district need to tell the Department of Ed about it, or the Superintendent of the County or anything, or they just go about how they independently?
I believe, yeah, they do-- there's no requirements.
If the-- if the student is going to be counted as part of the district's resident enrollment, then that gets part of-- reported to the state as part of the more general data collections, where they would say, we have X number of students. So for example, a student who is in the district free of charge because their parent is in active military, they will be reported just like a student who lives in that town. So it's not like a separate detailing of those individual students who meet that exception, but they are included in the data collections.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Dr. Johnson? Any other questions? Sylvia? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you.
We can't hear you. You're muted, perhaps. Sorry, Sylvia, it looks like you're muted. It says it's not muted. Okay. Speak, and we'll see if we can hear you, but--
Can you hear me at all? Can you hear me at all?
Yes, now we can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, I can. Yeah, I can. You never said I was muted. Um-- I don't know if you guys are hearing. I don't know if you guys are hearing. Previously, I have caught up-- I have seen a petition that happened when I was on my local-- I was on my local-- and I thought I was-- that-- that-- would be this-- at the level-- at the level-- prior to-- the LEAs-- in the state fair-- a-- out of district-- out of district-- or senior year-- they-- often let them do-- in district-- graduation-- pretty quick. It's your turn to-- district-- and then the county-- not-- crisis-- was a crisis, but-- as long as the family provided transportation themselves, often students old enough to have a vehicle sometimes to drive, still allow them to go. And I don't see where that flexibility still exists. Pretty sure I was told that it wouldn't. Anybody answer that?
The family crisis is prob-- is one of the exceptions. So if it falls within that exception, then they would not have to pay the tuition. But if the circumstances are different, I couldn't really hear all of the-- all of your question, but if it doesn't fall under any of the exceptions, then there has to be additional exceptions that would have to pass by the legislature to be part of this Chapter 61. I also-- I'm sorry.
Sure. The locals have-- flexibility. Wow, a student-- wow, a student-- not always a crisis-- about district. Gone to school-- in the district-- higher career-- higher-- weeks away from graduation. This doesn't allow the tax-- the graduation basis.
So if I understand correctly, you're referencing a situation where a student is in a district and has to-- and moves, but yet wants to continue the completion of his or her education in the school district that the child was previously enrolled in, and you're specifically referring to an exception should be available for that. And if I understand that correctly, many districts have policies in place to address that by stating that if a student is scheduled for graduation at the end of a semester, and that student moves, as long as that student can continue to report to school, that child may continue attending until graduation. Many school districts have that as a record separate from this with someone who has never attended that school district moving or attending it but not being charged a tuition. Does that clarify?
Right. It does, but-- based on what we've done in writing here, local-- care decisions can't just start-- play federal-- and it's kind of nuts.
So to clarify, and then I'm going to ask the team to weigh in, the circumstance surrounding this, as I understand the intention, was to ensure equity of tuition charges for any new student coming into a school district who may not be a resident. So if you have a policy that allows you to charge tuition, it should be charged for all students entering who do not live in without exception to-- or let me rephrase it, redefining exceptions as stated in the military. For sports is one that oftentimes falls into this area that we have to address, which is very different from how districts are able to handle a residency issue if a student moves out of district and wants to complete the school year, or wants to complete their formal education by graduating. I know, Alan, did you want to add anything, or Seychelle?
So, I mean, you can go ahead. So the-- I mean, that is maybe the practice, but as part of this law and the rules, these are the exceptions and the allowabilities. So then if the districts are-- have a certain practice in place, that is-- may not be in line exactly with the law.
So if it's incongruent, they have to change their--
Yes.
--policies?
Yes.
So if I--
Right.
I, if I've been to school in town-- all of my life-- all of my life, and my family moved-- graduation-- graduation-- I can't graduate-- I can't graduate-- my peers-- my peers.
No, I don't think that that applies here. Yeah. So--
It's not-- it's not--
Right, but you're referring to non-- right, you're referring to non-resident students on page six or slide six. If we can have slide six up again, so that way I think this is what we're addressing. Non-resident students are eligible to attend a school district tuition free in limited circumstances. And these are non-residents, but the students you're referring to were prior residents. So if you want to make a distinction, if my child is scheduled to graduate in June and we have to move in May, is that child now not allowed to continue with her course of study, correct? That's what you're asking?
Right. There would be non-residents-- non-residents.
Right, so my understanding of this, and we can ask legal to look into this, is the distinction is for students who are non-residents from the beginning, who have never attended that school district. So there are different categories for the circumstance. Because a child moves out of the district, the family, it doesn't predate the history of the child in that district if there's a policy for that child to complete the course of study. Okay, and we can circle back.
Non-resident defined as-- that-- not non-resident-- not non-resident as a-- this moment in time. This moment in time.
I didn't fully hear the question, but I want to make sure we will get back to you. I have attorneys here, and I want to make sure that they look into this for this distinction.
Are you, Sylvia, when you're putting this forward to perhaps be added to this, are you suggesting a certain amount of time? If their parents or family or guardian has moved in five months, 10 months, six months, three months, I mean, what is it that you are looking for in this-- a year? I mean, I'm just trying to understand what--
I, um-- not really-- not really-- prepared. It's hard to read it, but Alan, look for this. It was always-- that-- if a parent was moving-- they-- asking that they're-- they--
Could finish their--
that year. I don't-- that year. I don't think we had a-- specific-- specific-- time-- just that experience. They-- they-- flexibility to consider if-- recommendation superintendent.
One point to add, again, these are the exceptions for free attendance. So if-- if a child has moved out and it has only two months left, they could still continue that. There's no-- nothing that says in this law that they can't continue with paying tuition, and that tuition is determined by the local Board of Education. It just can't be zero, but based on the circumstances, maybe the local Board of Education can determine to be a very low tuition. So that's-- that doesn't affect the child to continue to graduate, but again, our legal team can take a look at it.
That-- you can't charge student-- one student-- out-- press.
Right. So, yeah.
If you're in a school-- dollars-- instead of child-- you don't-- you're in school 10 months-- even if you're prorated-- even if you're prorated-- that would be a thousand dollars-- that would be a thousand dollars--
Right.
finish. Yeah, that-- can't change the amount-- even-- that would be-- that would be--
Yes.
That certainly wouldn't use their-- presence.
Sure. So to just capitalize this, what we're looking at is implementing the law as it was signed by the governor. Then we get into the applicability and how each of our 665 school districts will have to align their policies with this regulation if the board so choo-- if and when the board so chooses to approve it. So great points are raised, and I'm glad we're having this during Second Discussion.
Thank you. So, so in response to her question and Second Discussion being done, and it's due to close in April, so should we ask that there be a Third Discussion? I mean, I'm just trying to wonder how you're going to come back on this question and--
So we haven't-- so our answer is that we are moving forward with the legislation that was signed by the governor. The applicability of it, as it relates to local districts, will be decided based on their implementation of it. And as Board Member Sylvia, Sylvia said, in one school district she referenced, that superintendent has the ability or the discretion to grant it. In other school districts, the discretion is not available. And yet in another, there's a different approach. But once these regulations are approved based on the law that was signed by the govern-- the bill that was signed by the governor into law, we now will go forward and have to look at how districts are aligned to it. We are unable to make changes to the law.
I see. Any other thoughts, Sylvia, or?
No, I appreciate-- No, I appreciate--
Of course.
I'm getting a different sense now. I did--
That-- thank you, Sylvia, for asking that question, because I do-- students who move out of the district due to a family crisis, I understand, but a family who the father gets transferred in the senior year, and they've been in that school, maybe, you know, kindergarten on, it's a 8-12 district. Am I to understand, then, that that person, the school district, would have to charge tuition? Is that because it's not a family crisis, the school district, based on these regulations, would have to charge tuition of that family for them to continue?
Yes, it sounds like it's not one of the exceptions. But again, Department of Education do not dictate what the tuition amount should be, or the legislation doesn't dictate that. So that tuition amount can be determined by the school, local school Board of Education.
And is that something that the local school district would have to stipulate at the beginning of the year, or is it-- is it different? Or that's something that's totally--
That's up to them, as long as they comply with the law.
Okay.
I do have, actually, one more question. Not every-- not every school district offered-- paid for-- paid for-- attendance-- attendance option. Officially-- my school district did not have that option. Officially-- changed-- that policy. That policy. But there is a district that doesn't expect tuition students, and there would be-- goability-- a student to continue their senior year if they-- if they form graduation.
That's not interpreted that way across the state, having-- knowing individuals and knowing several districts that do allow for that scenario. So I know that it does exist, and many of the districts that I'm familiar with firsthand do employ the option of supporting families and not forcing a child to transfer because the family has changed residence so close to graduation.
As long as you-- as long as you do charge-- must charge-- must charge that. But if you don't--
So--
if you don't charge-- you don't have the option of-- non-tuition-- actual tuition-- students, then there's nothing you can offer-- offer to students in college and finishers.
So we're speaking about local decisions, and so if prior to the adoption of this regulation in its new form, a school district determines its preference for tuition or being a non-tuition LEA. If you are non-tuition, then you don't charge non-residents tuition-- If you are non-tuition, then you don't charge non-residence tuition. That's your choice. And so the scenarios that you're putting forward have great nuance, and I think they have to be considered on a case-by-case basis in order to fully understand the impact at the local level.
I guess I would feel better as what you just said was in here.
Yes.
That. That's what. That's what. But.
Consider. The intent of the legislation.
I'm.
Sure. Yes, the intent of the legislation is to address students who are not residents of the school district and attending the school to, and do not plan to move there. What is a tuition? So I live in town A, I want to go to school in town B, I've never attended school in town B. Is there a tuition rate that I can pay to enroll my child there or to go there? And District B may say no, but District C may say yes. That's what we're speaking about as opposed to child X attending school B or C, moving to school district A, and now wanting to complete his or her formal education there because the child is close to graduation.
I think.
I think where I am. Where I am, it sounds like the solution is in buying as non.
Never.
Never have been.
Well, the legis, so for us, we don't have flexibility here regarding putting forward what the law says. So this is very prescriptive, because the legislators have crafted this, you know, through all their committees, and I want to be respectful of that process with the governor vetting it to put this before us. So the idea about ensuring that can be communicated, as we often do through our broadcast, and ensuring that our county superintendents are having these discussions. But by and large, they don't rise to the level where I hear about disputes that are on this topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sylvia. Appreciate your comments and your concerns. Are there other questions at this time? From our board members, perhaps online? Hearing none at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Goldenberg, and thank you for your presentation, Mr. Dupree and Mrs. Onat. So Item D, Chapter 23A, Fiscal Accountability, Efficiency, and Budgeting Procedures, first discussion. Chapter 23A establishes the rules to assure the financial accountability of district boards of education through enhanced state monitoring, oversight, and authority, and to ensure each district board of education adopts an annual budget that provides adequate resources to meet the mandate for a thorough and efficient system of free public schools for all children. The rules also establish requirements for accounting, financial reporting, and tuition rate setting by approved private schools for students with disabilities. The rules also set forth processes and procedures, including but not limited to new school applications, non-allowable costs, and audit requirements. Further, the rule is that the rules establish mechanisms to ensure the efficient expenditure of budgeted funds in a manner consistent with the school district's approved annual budget. Ms. Schultz, Executive Director for the Division of Finance and Business Services, and Mr. Huber, Assistant Commissioner of the Division of Legal and External Services, are here today to present an overview of the rulemaking and respond to your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, President Goldenberg, Vice President Mulvahill, and members of the State Board of Education. I'm excited to be here this morning to share the department's proposed amendments to the Regulatory Code for Chapter 23A, Fiscal Accountability, Efficiency, and Budgeting Procedures. These regulations are important to help ensure that taxpayer funds are expended in the most efficient and responsible manner. Okay. Thank you. This chapter addresses fiscal accountability rules for school districts, charter schools, Renaissance schools, and approved private schools for students with disabilities, or the APSSDs, and expire on April 6, 2024. You can see that the chapter contains two parts. Subchapters 1 through 15 are commissioners' regulations and do not require state board approval, while subchapters 16 to 22 are state board regulations. We anticipate that the two subchapters will be proposed for adoption concurrently. Today's presentation addresses the substantive changes to the chapter, does not include every change being proposed, such as those for grammar. This chapter of code and our proposed amendments are highly technical. We will take questions throughout the presentation. Here you will see the 15 chapters contained in the commissioners' regulations. In order, they are as follows. Definitions, including the superintendent salary cap, executive county superintendents or ECSs, administrator and board member accountability, school district fiscal accountability, effective and efficient expenditures of district funds, conditions for the receipt of state aid, school district travel policies and procedures, annual budget development and submission, ECS budget review procedures, fiscal growth limits, waivers, and separate questions, budget transfers. Sure. The commissioner regulations are being updated with the following goals in mind. Updating terminology, titles, and gender language. Replacing or removing outdated reference contained in current regulations. For example, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or the ACFR, replaces the old acronym. Replaced outdated rule references in 23A-6.3. And we updated OMB circular references throughout. We updated regulations for enacted legislation. Specifically, Public Law 2010, Chapter 39, made the position of school treasurer optional. Public Law 2010, Chapter 44, reduces school, district, county, and municipal property tax levy cap from 4% to 2%, and permits unused school, district, county, and municipal increases to be banked for three succeeding years. PL 2010, Chapter 121, permits ads on school buses. PL 2011, Chapter 202, allows type 1 districts to move elections from April to November. PL 2012, Chapter 78, permits type 2 districts with board of school estimates to move elections to November. PL 2011, Chapter 176, the Urban Hope Act, created a law which authorized the establishment of Renaissance school projects. PL 2013, Chapter 173, requires the Commissioner of Education to change the deadline for municipal review of defeated school budgets whenever he changes the annual school election. PL 2013, Chapter 280, extends timeline for certain budget-related tasks for districts with November elections. PL 2017, Chapter 83, requires state responsible kids after one year. PL 2019, Chapter 169, prohibits superintendent salary caps. And PL 2023, Chapter 124, changes certain election deadlines. And finally, the department is proposing to clarify rules by adding statutory references, amending language, recodifying rules to a more appropriate location within the commissioners' regulations. For example, Rule 7.2G and H were moved from elsewhere in the commissioners' regulations and were previously found at 7.6A through E, 7.12G, and 8.1D respectively.
You've already.
I'm sorry.
Someone in there, you've already read something about the commissioner and he. It shouldn't, I mean, obviously, it shouldn't say he.
Yeah, it should be they.
Thank you.
They. My apologies.
Yeah, no, we, we, yes, we did acknowledge all the, that grammar needed to be updated.
Yes, yes. And that was a law that was enacted. It's not actually in the, in the code. So our overview for the goals of subchapter 16 to 22, which are the state board regulations. Again, you will see that there are four goals, and the department is proposing to update terminology, titles, and gender language, as well as replacing or removing outdated references to statute and code. Rule text is also being updated for an acting legislation here with PL 2017, Chapter 260, or the School Funding Reform Act. This amends 17.1 tuition to add a new odd sum line to the tuition calculator, the calculation. PL 2010, Chapter 69, amended 18A, colon, 7B-12A, to assign district of residence for students in resource homes to the district where the parent or guardian resides. PL 2010, Chapter 39, made the position of school treasurer optional. PL 2011, Chapter 176, the Urban Hope Act, established the Renaissance school projects. PL 2017, Chapter 83, and PL 2012, Chapter 80, amended NJSA, 18A, colon, 7B-12D, to require the state to pay educational costs for students in certain transitional facilities. And finally, the department proposes updating policies for APSSDs to ensure public tuition dollars are being used effectively and efficiently in the provision of these essential services. There are 14 proposed changes in this chapter we will discuss. Six of the changes are in the fiscal accountability section of the chapter, which will be discussed on the next slides. Let's now take a look at the six proposed changes for fiscal accountability. There's a lot of text here, so I'm not going to read it all, but keep in mind, as we go through the proposed rule text in the presentation, that anything bold is what the department is proposing, and anything in brackets is being proposed for removal from the text. The first proposed change will allow districts to expand their chart of accounts beyond the minimum and applies the requirement for additional policy that must be adopted when the chart of accounts is expanded. This rule amendment specifies that the rule applies to a district board of education that formally adopts a resolution to expand upon the minimum requirements for the budget system. And number two, a proposed new rule will require a district board of education or charter school or Renaissance project board of trustees adopting a resolution to expand upon the uniform minimum chart of accounts to follow the budgetary and over expenditure controls pursuant to the rules found later in this chapter, specifically in 23A-16.10, parentheses, A3. The proposed amendment will ensure the school districts follow the detailed additional policy at 16.10 when changing a chart of accounts. The department's second discussion item proposes a new rule to address a law that eliminated the requirement for school districts to have a treasurer. This rule clarifies that if a district charter school or Renaissance school board of trustees eliminates the position of treasurer and delegates responsibilities to another individual, the board is required to maintain the same level of insurance coverage related to the performance of the treasurer's functions. The department's next proposed change adds additional language to specific criteria.
I'm sorry. So, so the rest of that about assuming the duty shall have a bond equal that on page eight?
For the.
Is that not supposed to be in there anymore? I didn't hear you say it. That's why I'm asking.
That. We need to go back to eight, please. Sorry about that. No, that should be in there. So the same level of insurance coverage related to the treasurer's duty, and they, or they shall have their bond increased up to the amount of the treasurer's bond.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. I'll just start over on this slide, so we're all starting from the beginning here. The department's next proposed change adds additional language to the specific criteria, failing to meet the standard, scoring below 80% on the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, or QSAC, and others, with general criteria that gives the commissioner discretion to determine which districts must submit financial reports to the county office. This rule will give more flexibility to the commissioner related to district financial reporting. Moving on to the fourth proposal that adds new rule.
Amanda, excuse me.
No, that's okay. It's just, so it's 60 days of the month's end, back on page nine, and the executive county superintendent, that part that we've put in bold there, that is included, correct?
Correct. Anything in bold we are adding to the rule text, anything bracketed is being removed. So here we're adding that upon the approval of district boards of education or charter schools or Renaissance projects, board of trustees selected at the commissioner's discretion. So it's just providing that additional flexibility to the commissioner if needed for additional financial reporting.
I see. Thank you.
Welcome. Moving on to the fourth proposal that adds new rule language, this deals with how a school district can apply to the department for an advance of state aid. This rule outlines when a district corrective action is not sufficient to avoid a deficit, how that district can request a state aid advance on a commissioner-prescribed application. You will note that there are two scenarios outlined in this rule. One rule is for districts with a state monitor, and the other is for districts without a state monitor. Rules related to student activity funds are also proposed for changes. These changes outline that revenue and expenditures generated by student groups are for specific purposes. The proposal also removes the definition of student activity funds because they are defined in the definitions for Chapter 23A. The new rule at the end require the district board of ed to establish policy with a set timeline for the expenditure of the student activity fund, and authorizes the district boards of education or charter school board of trustees to allocate remaining unexpended funds. The new rules will ensure that funds do not remain for years and are properly expended in accordance with board policy.
Again, thank you. I'm just trying to make sure that all of us, with the rules that are bolded here, are actually able to see exact changes, not just an overview of what you're saying. And so I guess this question about clubs and senior class trips, do you want them to spend it that year? Is that what that breaks down into?
It really will depend upon what the board policy determines. What we don't want to have happen is a senior class of 1985 didn't fully spend their funds, and in 2025, those funds still remain. So we really want them to use the funds within a dedicated time period, which should be in alignment with their board policy.
Thank you.
The department proposes changes to rules related to certification method for tuition calculations. These rule changes would require a district board of education notify the executive county superintendent and the Office of School Finance prior to March 1st, preceding the September of the school year for which the tentative tuition rate is being determined whenever a district board of education determines to change the calculation method. The proposed amendment will ensure the district board of education uses the same method for determining the tentative and certified rates of tuition.
Sorry. Is the Office of School Finance? Sorry, is, is the office of school finance at the school or here at the DOE?
It would be here at the Department of Education. That office is a part of the Division of Finance and Business Services.
Okay. I'm just wondering, since you said that the treasurer wasn't necessarily, okay. Thank you.
Next, let's focus on the APSSD rule changes that are being proposed by the department. The first proposed amendment addresses maximum salaries at the APSSDs. These changes are detailed over this slide and the next, and allows an annual increase in maximum salaries of the greater of the highest salary for each job title in the prior year, or a two percent increase for all staff positions, including related services, such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech. The current maximum salaries have been frozen for the last seven years for all positions, with the exception of the related services. The proposed changes standardizes the calculation. It's an increase for all salaries that have been frozen, but is a new limit for the related services, which have grown by thirty-five percent over each of the last seven years. You'll note, though, that the max salary calculation for all admin positions will continue to be indexed for school size based on average daily enrollment, as was done in the past. I'm just going to pause here. There's a lot of rule text here, and as a reminder, the bold text is language that the department is proposing be added, and the bracket is proposed for elimination from the rule. And I know this rule is long, so I'm just going to pause to give you time to.
Thank you.
And I just want to kind of step in here and just highlight one thing. So as part of the regulatory process, we have ongoing discussions with stakeholders in the field, which, which you know. And I do want to, to highlight that there is a portion of this rule. So the, if you look, I don't, I can barely say, dual compensation advanced degrees, where there's portions of that, that part, part of this regulation that we're going to revisit with stakeholders. So there may be changes that are made ahead of second discussion.
Just that one part, dual?
Of this, of this particular regulation, yes. Yes, so, so obviously this is being presented at first discussion to the board. So in the time from when this was made public, through the publication of the agenda, we had continuing discussions with stakeholders. And since then, we have determined internally that we're going to revisit this particular language and put forward, potentially put forward new language ahead of second discussion for the board's consideration.
So if I understand you, sir, the longevity pay that stipends the bonuses, that's what?
That's, that would stay in. So the only change would be the advanced degree language. I'm sorry, I'm struggling to read it, would be the advanced degree language. So as of right, again, what I will say is that our, thank you. What I will say is that our conversations with stakeholders are ongoing, and obviously any, anything else that comes of it that we believe internally would, would, would benefit, you know, the, the regulations may be changed ahead of second discussion, but as of right now, it's the advanced degree language that we're going to revisit. It expires, I want to say, beginning of April. I don't know the exact date, but it's beginning of.
April sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
So if I can just ask a few other questions. So salaries were frozen, if I understand you, for seven years for everybody that worked in these schools for the disabled.
Except for those related services of occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech.
Right, I wrote that down.
The maximum salary.
Maximum salaries.
I'm sorry?
The maximum salaries were frozen. So maximum salary is, is the cap on which you cannot go above and have it be allow, an allowable cost charged back as tuition.
Okay. And so for seven years, that salary was frozen for all the employees and the administrative expenses, which include what?
So the teacher salary, instructional staff salary was, was all frozen. All the maximum salaries for every position in APSSD except for those related services were all frozen over the last seven years. And we're just talking about the maximum salary. So it doesn't necessarily mean that if I'm a teacher on APSSD, I may have received a salary increase over those past seven years, but if I was at the maximum, if, and I'm just throwing this out there, if I owned an APSSD, Amanda's APSSD, and I had to abide by those maximum salaries, and the maximum salary for a teacher was a hundred and ten thousand, and I had a teacher making a hundred and ten, I couldn't give them more than a hundred and ten over the last seven years because they were frozen.
And this would, this would, is this the part that we read about that would increase employee salaries a half a percent a year, potentially, is, no?
No, so the way it would operate is, it's one of two things. It's either recalculate the maximum salary, and it goes up a certain percentage point, or two percent, whichever is greater, right? So if we do, if we conduct the maximum salary calculation, and based upon that it goes up five percent, then it goes up five percent. But if we conduct the maximum salary calculation and it goes up one point five percent, or one percent, or there's deflation and it goes down, they would get a two percent increase. So the minimum, the maximum salary is going to go up year over year is two percent.
The maximum.
Minimum.
The minimum.
Minimum is, so no matter, if all things being equal, and maximum salaries don't go up, it would go, our calculation does not go up, it's going to go up two percent.
I see.
Year over year.
And the salary that was said by, I think, Kevin Damer back then, that this would be looked at and discussed with the stakeholders, has that been done?
We're currently finalizing that salary study, and once that's finalized, it will be shared with the stakeholders. But to date, it has not, with the maximum salary study that was outlined in the last code adoption, that's being finalized right now.
From seven years ago? That maximum salary from seven years ago?
It was required under the code seven years ago, and we've been looking at it each year, but the final study is, is almost complete, and once it's completed, it will be shared. But yes, you are correct. It was required from the code that was re-adopted seven years ago.
And that's been frozen for seven years?
Correct.
So, seven years is an awful long time, it seems. Is there, I worry that when you, I worry about how do you attract and retain excellent educators in an approved private special ed school if your salaries are, max salaries are kept? Why would a person, educator, choose to teach in that type of a setting if, you know, financially they are going to need to maybe make more money? Are we looking at that, what trickle-down effect that possibly could have?
That will be part of what the team is, is looking at. But I will say that we did hear that there's challenges from the APSSD community in attracting teachers because they are competing with the public schools. We've listened to that, and we believe that our proposed rule that we're putting before you today helps to address that, because we do recognize the vulnerable population and the special, special skill set that the staff has to have to work with the population, and we're hopeful that this puts the APSSDs on par with the public schools and are able to attract the, the most appropriate candidate and the best candidate.
And just to clarify, you will be meeting with these stakeholders to discuss that, to make sure that, because they're, they obviously know what staffing needs they have, so that everyone can come to terms, that we can make sure we're putting the best possible educators in, in those schools, so, okay?
Yes, so we will be meeting with them.
And also, just to clarify, yes, there has been a seven-year time span, but we've also had the pandemic in between those years that has actually reordered some of our prioritization of work. So I just want to acknowledge that the work has continued, albeit not at the rate of speed that was intended, but we are making progress and are near the end of that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So the behavioral and medical and special needs of these students are critical, and I believe there are at least ten thousand in our state that are entitled to the best education and help possible. So I guess my, my next concern is what is included in the administration in your evaluation of administrative people or things that they pay for that I believe curtails an increase? Did I read that correctly? So it was frozen seven years ago, and now what happens with the administrative salaries according to this? Not just the.
So we are actually, the next rule P addresses the administration, so we can talk about that next.
Okay.
Can I have a question?
I, I'm sorry, who's speaking?
It's Andy Mulvahill. Could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
No problem, thank you. So how did you come up with what these increases or adjustments should be that we're seeing here on the slide? Where did that come from?
The, the two, specifically the two percent, Andy?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was from conversations with stakeholders. That was through conversations with stakeholders.
So as I understand it, and I've heard, as a number of board members have, extensively from the association that represents these private schools, they don't feel that there's been a healthy dialogue, and they're very frustrated that this has come out without them seeing or reviewing any kind of employee compensation study, which you referred to. So I just, it seems that maybe we're getting a little ahead of ourselves here. If you, if the study hasn't been done, it hasn't been shared, I don't know how we're, you know, putting in here what it should be until that study's been reviewed and, and reviewed by, you know, the stakeholders as well. I think we're moving a little bit too fast here. And I, you know, look, I don't really understand the specific details here, but I know that these stakeholders are up in arms, that they're, they're very, very upset about the process, and I really think we should slow this whole thing down. But thank you.
For the public's sake, Vice President Mulvahill, we've gotten a lot of correspondence from, correspondence from stakeholders. So I think that that's something that the public doesn't know, but the DOE does, so keep, keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next slide also addresses maximum salaries. And the added language here clarifies the maximum allowable salaries are based on the greater of the highest contracted salary or fee by administrative job title in a district board of education statewide with comparable daily enrollment for any prior year for each job title or an increase of two percent of the previous year's published salary. This rule also allows for salaries to be prorated for ten-month employees as well as part-time or split positions. Again, this is a reminder, the max salary calculation for admin positions will continue to be indexed for school size based on average daily enrollment, as it has been, been done in the past. And again, I'm going to pause because this is another very long rule text, and I want to make sure everyone has time to read it.
When everyone's ready, just let us know. Are there questions at this time? Dr. Johnson?
Excuse me. Just a quick question. Looking at this, are there regional offsets based on county locations? I see that was a reference point.
So the, the administrative are statewide, and the maximum salaries for instructional staff still, still, still being done by county. So it is county-based for the instructional staff. The administrative is statewide.
So I remember a few years back, like, there were regional offsets, like, north, central, south, based on cost of living in each region. Is that applied in this formula at all?
It is not, because it's, again, it's based by county. So you'll see a difference in the salaries, looking at like Atlantic County versus a Bergen County. You're going to see the difference already baked into that because we are doing it by county.
Okay. But that's really based on where that county is located regionally in the state, I would assume.
Correct.
That's right.
Correct.
Yep, that's right.
Kathy, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to call on you right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, y'all. Thanks for all of this. I have a quick question. It looks like y'all are, like, removing the comparison to Educational Services Commissions. Aren't those, and I, I think that those are probably the most similar schools to these schools. What's the rationale for that, or like the data that's supporting that shift?
I'm sorry. I'm fine. Do you repeat the question when you give me?
So the question is, I think, if we can.
There's a lot of.
Yeah, can you, Fatima?
Oh, she has the headset on.
Okay. So I think the question was the removal of the Ed Services Commission as a comparison. And, you know, I think a lot of the, we could certainly take a look at it, but I think the, the, the crux of the reasoning being is that the Ed Services Commission's, their focus and their, the way they operate has shifted from a full-time school for, for these individual students to a more of a service-based model. So they will come into schools, provide services, provide services to students, as opposed to an APSSD where the student is going to school at the APSSD, if that, if that makes sense.
Fatima, did that answer your question sufficiently?
Ed Services Commission's have moved towards, more towards the, the service provider type of model as opposed to a operation.
I think I got, I need it. That, thanks, Chris, for that. But I'm trying to figure out, then what are we losing by not, you see what I'm saying? Like, what are we, even though they are shifting, they were the most similar, what are we losing by taking out them as a comparison?
By taking out the what?
Taking them out as a comparison. I mean, it's, we're trying to compare the most like positions that we can, and we could certainly take a look at that, Fatima, and, and provide a more, you know, a more broader answer as, you know, a second discussion. But I think the, the crux of it is we're trying to compare the most like positions that we could, and from the most like facilities.
And also, if I may add, the, can we fix the feedback, please? Oh, oh, because she doesn't, so also, am I correct in understanding that the Education Services Commissions were never subject to a cap?
So.
A salary cap?
Superintendent salary cap, that's, that's correct.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Well, nobody has superintendent salary cap now, but, but back even when, when regular districts had it, Ed Services Commissions did not.
Although they've been frozen for seven years.
No, no, totally different. So Ed Service Commissions, there was no salary cap for Ed Service, superintendent salary cap for Ed Service Commissions.
I see.
When, when there was for regular operating school districts.
But in, in this, we're looking at the superintendents for the schools themselves, correct?
Superintendent directors, whatever their titles are, yeah.
Right, and, I'm sorry?
Yeah, which all feeds into the administrative cap. Yeah, which all feeds into the administrative cap, right? Well, the administrative costs. When we look at administrative costs, you calculate all the salaries. So if we're adding, if we're comparing to an entity that has never had a cap, it can actually skew the data, because you can actually then infer that one group is adversely impacted when that may not be accurate. So this is why the initial thought was to remove that one group, because in addition to having that feature of not having a cap ever, they also have additional services that they provide that generate income in addition to tuition. So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, as it may have been at one time.
So the superintendents in this discussion?
Yes.
They weren't capped for the last seven years?
No, we're just responding to Fatima's question about why there is not a comparison, or why the comparison is no longer being made between Educational Services Commissions and the APSSDs.
All right, but, okay. But in this particular code that we're being asked to look at, superintendents of districts, their caps have been removed legally, but we're putting a cap on these individuals through this?
Maximum salary cap, yes.
The maximum salary cap has been in place.
Yeah, it's been in place, right.
So we're not putting it on.
Right, it's been in place for years.
But we're not removing it, and we did remove it from superintendents around the state.
That's correct.
For the reason that...
So let me kind of take a little bit of a step back here and just kind of get into how, so these schools operate, they charge back what is deemed an allowable cost, and what these regs do is kind of define a lot of what is an allowable cost. What that means is what the, what the school can charge back to a district as tuition. So when it's, when a district sends a student to an APSSD, so I'm pursuing to an IP, the APSSD then charges the set, what we call the sending district, their home district, a tuition. And what these regs do is delineate what can be charged back to the sending district as part of tuition. So as part of that, for, as long as I know, there has been a cap on the maximum amount that an administrator can charge back to the district, the sending district as part of tuition. That's correct.
And that's been for the last seven years?
Yes, it may have, I don't know, it may have been before that, but I don't, I don't know. I can only speak for the last seven years.
And is there a cap on the number of administrators that are allowed in an approved private special ed school? With the new code that you're proposing?
I believe there is. I don't know exactly what the number is, but I believe there is.
I thought I read three.
I think that might be right, but I would have to confirm.
Has special ed been consulted with all of this and...
Yes. So again, APSSDs have this weird, there's the programmatic side, which is overseen by special ed, and then there's the fiscal side. So, but they do work in conjunction and collaborate pretty readily on all of this.
Amanda, could you go into a bit more detail what all is included besides a superintendent salary and the administrative cap of this proposal?
Sure. I'm...
Just to give us a flavor.
Yeah, and I'm going to rely on my team to text me some information, too, to fill in the blanks that...
So do you not, if you don't have it now, we can circle back?
Yeah, can we circle back? Just I want to make sure you have the most up-to-date information.
She doesn't have it.
And I don't have it in front of me.
Yes.
Kathy, can I ask another question? Andy?
Vice President Mulvihill, you have the floor.
The one thing I kind of struggle with is the sending district can choose which of these private schools they're going to send the kids to, right? They're not forced to pick one or another. They may decide based upon location or expertise, but they're not forced to send their kids to any of these particular schools, right?
It is an agreement that is reached with members of the child study team, upon which the parent is a member of, depending on the age of the child, the child may be an engaged member of the team, as well as professionals in the school district.
But they're not forced. So if there's a school that's charging too much, you don't have to send your kid there. You could send the kid to a school that's charging less, right?
When you say you, you're referring to the sending district, Vice President Mulvihill?
Yeah, the sending district with the parents, if they find that the tuition's too expensive, and there's somebody that's more efficient and has a better price, they could send them there, right?
So that is not the driving force in decisions made locally regarding the education of students, who may require what has been termed an out-of-district placement, or at a placement at a school outside of the district of residence. There are numerous factors that come into play, and leading that discussion are the services that the child needs. And so looking at that, our APSSDs are often considered first, as we have longstanding partnerships that exist, and they are typically in the closest locale to where the family may be, either in that district municipality itself or in the county. Then there may be a request for the exploration of schools that are not APSSDs, and so it is a very individualized process. But there is not a targeting of placement by district that says, oh, your child should go there because the cost is X. That does not occur.
So they don't, the sending district doesn't care what it costs? Is that what you're saying?
No.
I just, I guess the point that I'm trying to make is, you know, you look at the depth of these regulations and all these things we're trying to control, and I know there's major pushback by the association on what's been proposed here, and it just would seem to me that we might be better served with a little bit more of a free-market economy approach, but that's probably a bridge too far. It's something to maybe keep in mind. Thank you for...
Thank you, that's great for first discussion. You're welcome.
Did you want to speak, please, Board Member Bennett?
Yes. So I have some knowledge of how the district then looks for placement of students. First of all, you look in-house. What does the child need, and what does the district offer to meet those needs? And if you don't find a location in the district, and there's another school, their parents will often come back to the district and say, I found a school where my child can go. The district with child study team, the child's case manager, is going to be a part of that discussion, to try to figure out what's the best location for the child, proximity, because travel, it's not in district, it's going to be out of district, so travel becomes another factor. And then districts look at, over time, how much is taking one child out of district and placing them in this setting going to cost? And whether or not there's any way to develop a program in district that would meet those needs. So I know that it is a multiplicity of factors that have to be looked at, and I think that the beginning discussion with the stakeholders, with the districts, to say what the children need and how to provide those services is a critical start point.
Yes. And now, Board Member Penya, thank you very much.
So I just wanted to ask, was extraordinary aid looked at as part of the salary studies? Because that is money that comes back to the districts, and that's helpful when you are looking for a placement, knowing that you are going to get some of that money back. So I'm just wondering if that was part of this conversation?
Yes and no. Extraordinary aid is not, I think the answer is yes and no. So extraordinary aid is not a dollar-for-dollar, obviously, they get back, and it also does not kick in until you reach a certain threshold. So...
Forty thousand? Is it still...
It depends on the placement, right? So it's forty thousand, but, so it's not, it's taken, it was somewhat taken into account, but I think the limitations on the way that extraordinary aid kicks in, it was not a driving force behind crafting these regulations. Again, what we're trying to do is maximize the number of dollars, right? Maximize the efficiency of dollars and everything else for the education of students.
Are there any other comments or questions at this time about that? Are we continuing with the rest of the presentation, please? Thank you.
Okay. The department proposes new rules to state the commissioner's tuition rate determination is final after 35 business days if the APSSD does not submit all requested supporting documentation. If the department's compliance review of an independent auditor's certified actual cost per student discovers a non-compliance finding that may alter the tuition rate paid by sending school districts, the proposed new rule will require the APSSD to respond within 35 business days with the department requested documentation, corrections, or requests for an extension of time to become compliant. Requiring a deadline for APSSDs to submit documentation will increase efficiency and improve audit completion time.
I understand. I don't know. It's a lot.
The next two slides propose changes to the maximum school size for new APSSDs. As we discuss this, keep in mind that we're talking about an entire school, not class sizes. This also applies only to new schools approved to operate during the '25, '26 fiscal year or later, not schools currently operating. The department is proposing an increase in the minimum school size from 24 students to 35 students, because smaller schools do not benefit from economies of scale and are more expensive to run. This generally leads to higher tuition rates for school districts, costs that are then passed on to taxpayers. Additionally, DOE has found that some smaller APSSDs are closing because it is cost prohibitive and hard to compete with the larger APSSDs. Increase in the size of the school upfront will provide a better footing for long-term success.
I do have a question. We'll go ahead, please.
I really have a lot of concern about this. There are some amazing parent groups that are trying to put together schools that are going to maximize the potential of their students. By changing this from 24 to 35, what, how can you look at the feasibility? An APSSD school needs to follow a student there is guided by an IEP. So that if we say financially, it would be hard to provide the services, I don't understand how that could possibly be, because there's an IEP that that student is in a school, say 24 students, a school that starts, it doesn't make sense to me that if we're moving to 35, that the school's going to run any more efficiently. Schools need to start out. They start out small, they grow, they provide great services for the students that they serve. So I really have a hard time seeing how will any school be able to start if we're putting that kind of limitation on it. And I think there's some great things out there, people that are talking about, you know, the newest, the best innovations. I think it limits innovation, and I just, I can't wrap my head around how we can make that a requirement. I think there are waiting lists on so many of these schools, that a new school may say, you know what, this kid doesn't have to be on a waiting list. There's a limited time to 21 that these people can take advantage of these schools. So I would love to hear what other studies, what other information are you bringing to the table that we can put together that this makes sense, 24 to 35?
Okay, thank you for your comments, and I have to say that based on our conversation with the policy committee, the department is continuing to evaluate this entire proposal that's speaking to the change in the minimum school size. So this is something that is continued to be looked at, and we're also going to be discussing.
If I could chime in, Kathy? It's Andy again?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, again, the same philosophy that I was speaking about earlier, if there's a school district, excuse me, if there's a private school that wants to open up, and they think that they can make it a go with 24 students, and there's a sending district that wants to send a child there, why are we getting in the way? Why are we dictating, no, you have to have 35? Somebody wants to open up a school with smaller number, and it works for them, and it works financially for them, because it's for profit, or maybe they're even willing to take a loss for a number of years until they can get to a critical mass. Why are we, why do we feel the need to inject our stuff? Why don't we just let the market prevail? And schools won't open if it doesn't make sense at under 35? Or schools won't send, districts won't send school kids to schools that don't provide the appropriate services that you think a school under 35 can? So I'm against this. I don't think we should restrict. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As far as how we got to that number 35, it was based on finances, but not on individual children and whatever their individual needs were, probably, right?
So we're proposing this based on the economies of scale, that larger programs tend to be run more efficient, and they're less expensive to run.
Because we don't want them running at a negative.
How many schools do we actually even have that have only 24 students or less than? Would the others be grandfathers that are currently?
Current, so this would only be for new schools, right? So any existing school does not have to meet, it would not have to meet the 35, would just be for new schools. And again, it would be for, after they receive preliminary approval for two years, and they would have to have an average daily enrollment of 35 at the end of those two years.
And it could ultimately be an apples placement if they weren't approved.
If you don't mind, you can let us know.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Parents could still send their kids.
So we'll get back to you with that number.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the question. Hearing no other questions, seeing no other hands up, if you continue, thank you.
This slide is continuation of the changes we are proposing related to the increase of the minimum school size from 24 to 35 to open a new APSSD. Here you can see the new rule text that's outlining the change at the very bottom, Roman numeral B, number five. Additionally, the APSSD must attain the minimum average daily enrollment of 35 public school placement students by the end of the third year after the year in question, or its approval shall be rescinded and will no longer be considered an APSSD. Again, as I commented before, based on conversation that we had with the policy committee, we are looking at this, and there could be potential changes in second discussion.
Thank you.
There are five more changes to be considered for APSSDs on the next few slides. The department is proposing to increase the capitalization of a fixed asset expenditure from $2,000 to $5,000. This is proposed to account for inflation since the last rule adoption. Proposed change number six on the slide in front of you addresses a retention policy for audit documentation, to include that records must be retained until all appeals, including litigation, are final. This updated rule will improve the audit process and is consistent with state record retention policies.
What, I'm sorry, what was the 5,000 from 2,000? That was for the fixed asset key? Just expand on that for a second.
Sure. So this will help APSSDs directly expense an expenditure up to $5,000 in the current year. Previously, anything over 2,000, they'd have to depreciate over the life of that asset. So if, you know, they...
So that can be five...
Yeah, now it'll go up to, it'll be over 5,000 instead of 2. So if I wanted to replace a door, and it was $4,500, I can directly pay for that and not have to worry about taking depreciation over the life of the door. Proposed changes on this slide include adding new rule texts allowing the department to request a corrective action plan for certain infractions, which include, but are not limited to, deficit fund balances, habitual non-compliance termination, or continual failure to respond to department's request for responses to non-compliance letters. This provides additional flexibility for oversight of the APSSDs if needed. The department's proposed new rule number eight above will authorize the commissioner to revoke an APSSD... to revoke an APSSD's approval effective at the end of the school year when an APSSD has been chronically placed on conditional approval status and/or demonstrates systemic non-compliance. This rule provides the ability to close a school for failure to follow this chapter's finance regulations rather than only pursuant to the rules founded in Chapter 14, Special Education. This obviously would be in conjunction and, you know, informed with conversations with our special ed office. This isn't something that finance would just do. It would obviously be in consultation with the Office of Special Education.
But in the end of the day, it's the department that has the right, not the special ed department.
So, yes. So let me, this is in direct response to, to a, it's the best way to put it, kind of a hole in our regulations, to be very frank. So under current regulations, the Office of Special Education has the ability to put a program, excuse me, an APSSD on conditional approval or revoke their approval, whereas the fiscal side of the House does not. So what we, where we ran into difficulty was the special ed programmatic side had to defend the fiscal decisions, which makes it difficult. So this grants similar authority to the finance side if there are infractions to place a school on conditional approval or to revoke approval. But I think what Amanda is saying is none of these decisions, right? Because what we're doing is if we do place a school on conditional approval or we do, in the very rare instance, revoke approval to a school, for a school, none of this is done in a vacuum, right? There are students that are implicated, there are students that are affected if a school is closed. So we will work in conjunction with special ed, with the special ed office, who in turn works, excuse me, with the sending districts to ensure there is a long runway for every single one of these students and they have an appropriate placement to move into when the time, when the time comes.
And in that paradigm, will the special ed department of education individuals work with the school also to try to bring them up to whatever dissatisfaction that the special ed division finds with that school?
So I think there's, 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 there's two pieces to it, right? There's, there's the programmatic piece, which would involve the special ed office, and then there's also the finance piece, which is what, what these regs oversee. So the finance office, well, yes, absolutely 100%, they're on conditional approval, continue to work with them to bring them up to approval, which is where the corrective action piece comes into play. Same side on the programmatic side under Chapter 14. If there is, if they're placed on conditional approval or if there's corrective action needed on the programmatic side, the special ed office will continue to work with them to bring them up to where they need to be.
Thank you. Board member Bennett?
So working with the school hoping to correct is ideal, but I'm going to be the parent whose child is in the school that may be closed. What is the lead time that the school is going to know and the department's going to make sure that the parents are informed? Because school ends in June, but comes end of August, beginning of September, my child's got to be back in school and got to be in a setting where his needs are met per his IEP. So are we going to build into this revised language some specificity of notification of time so that we don't wind up, it's June the first and now I'm being told the school's closing and my kid's not going to be there?
So the short answer is we are reluctant to put a time limit, a deadline on it because we can't foresee every circumstance. But what I will say is this, we are very cognizant of the, the impact a change in placement can have on these students and we try to give as much of a runway as absolutely possible. And if we're going to make a certain decision relative to one of these, first of all, if we're going to make a decision to revoke the approval of one of these schools, it absolutely 100% is not taken lightly and it absolutely has, many things have occurred to lead up to that point. Like that is a absolute drop dead, we have no other option but to do this type of situation. And if we do get to that point, we will give absolute, we will give as much runway to the school and to the parents and to the students and the sending districts as well as we can. But we can't put a hard and fast deadline on it because we can't foresee every circumstance that may come into play where quick action needs to be taken.
I hear what you're saying and I understand you can't predict every eventuality, but I'm going to, I'm going to be on the side of the parent with the child that needs to know where my child is going to be. And all of that can't fall back on the parent and hopefully the district is stepping up. But I think we have to be very careful that we don't hit a slippery slope and leave kids in a very bad position.
Understood.
And I would also add that in addition to collaborating with our Office of Special Education, the county office staff is also heavily involved and they could be a big help with the school district in identifying the alternative placement. So they will also be engaged heavily in the conversation.
I think we've talked about time limitations before in circumstances and I feel like we should always err on the side of the student.
Yes.
And as much as we have the best of intentions now, if we're putting this in and it's another seven years before we touch it, we should have something that really solidifies that we will let parents and schools know.
Okay.
The best interest. Thank you. Can we continue, please? If there's nothing, I don't see a hand up, please? Thank you.
The new rule requires that an APSSD that sells a building that operates programs funded by public placement school tuition and buys another building to operate the same or a new APSSD, return the proceeds to the sending districts. This rule will ensure public tax dollars will be used for public services and that any gain from the sale of a building will be equitably distributed among those sending districts.
So if a school is holding its presence in a building that's owned and rented and that rented facility is sold, what happens then? Nothing?
Nothing should happen because they don't own the building. This specifically is speaking to APSSDs that own their property and then go and sell it.
So it's never by a private individual or private consortium or equity, PE?
No.
Okay. All right. I have a lot of questions, but did you want to finalize by saying the various things that you're looking at?
Yes. So this is the last one, right?
That's the last one.
Yep. So I just want to also highlight for the board, there's two other aspects of the regulations that we're going to continue to look at and we're going to revisit. One is a decrease in administrative cap. So in the materials that you have, it indicates a incremental decrease in, excuse me, administrative cap from the current 22.5% down to 20%. We're going to, to take a second look at that following conversations with stakeholders. Additionally, there is an amendment to the regulation addressing behavioral modification and what is allowable, and what's an allowable cost for behavioral modification. We're going to take a look at that as well.
Okay.
So we, if, to the extent any changes are made, they'll be presented at second discussion to the board.
Okay. And perhaps in meeting with the stakeholders and parents and you can also listen to other things that they may bring that you feel is warranted to make appropriate changes.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Now, if there's, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have a work session to announce other than our...
Item E.
Item E. I beg your pardon, we have Chapter 12.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry.
Item E, Chapter 12, inter-district public school choice, first discussion. Chapter 12 establishes the rules for the inter-district public school choice program, more simply called the choice program. The rules include the eligibility criteria for a school district and a student to participate in the choice program, the application process for a district board of education interested in applying to become a choice district, the rules governing the admissions of choice students, student transportation, and choice program funding. Mr. Irving, Assistant Commissioner for the Division of Field Support and Services, and Ms. Bloom, Executive Director of Field Support and Services, are here today to present an overview of the rulemaking and respond to your questions. Please.
Thank you, Commissioner. And good afternoon, members of the State Board, President Goldenberg, Commissioner to the new State Board members. Ms. Bloom and I are here to present the regulatory changes recommended, regulatory changes for Chapter 12, changes that we feel are pretty straightforward and direct, and so we will endeavor to communicate that in our conversation with you today. Today we'll present the overview of the inter-district public school choice program and the department's proposed changes to the amendments of Chapter 12. We'll begin with some background on the choice program, just to make sure we all can level set on the same page. The mission of the choice program is to increase educational opportunities for parents and students by providing public school options outside of a student's district of residence and giving parents the power to select a school district or program that best serves their child's individual needs. To that end, the choice program enables approved choice school districts to enroll K-12 grade, K-12 grade students who do not reside within their districts without cost to their parents. I want to take a moment just to overview the choice program procedurally, just so the State Board understands exactly how the program runs. Number one, a school district applies to the Department of Education to become a choice district school. And once approved, they then can publicize the available seats that they've applied for. To that end, choice districts can limit their choice programs to a particular grade range or to a particular program like STEM, ROTC, the arts, and a reasonable selection criteria is then created in an effort to attract and then admit those students into the program. Let me be clear, a choice school district cannot discriminate in its admission policies. In addition, students apply to a choice school district and if accepted, are enrolled in that district. And once enrolled, they remain in that district until the final grade of their lifecycle in that particular district. Now, if in the case they're in a choice school, that there are more applicants than there are seats, that choice school district then must have a blind lottery to admit those students as well. On the presentation you have on the next slide, this is just a visual representation of what it just shared. It's kind of the flow chart of how the choice kind of lifecycle operates. We'll move on to the next slide, please.
You may want to give the public a little bit more to look at.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Good. Thank you so much. Next up, I just want to share some data about the choice program. On the slide you see here, the choice, the choice program is actually relatively small in regard to participating in school districts and students. Due to the rapid growth in the number of choice districts from 15 to 2015 districts in 2010 to 128 district 2015, state funding was limited. As a result, no additional districts have been allowed to apply to participate in the choice program after fiscal year 2016, and choice enrollment in the existing school districts have been held flat. With regard to how the choice program is funded, do you want to?
Yes. 2016 was the last time that...
Thank you.
2016, the last time any other schools were added to become a choice district. So I'm, I'm looking at the mission and I love the mission, increase educational opportunities for students and their families by providing students with public school options outside their district of residence. And we only have 125 operating choice districts. So since 2016, we haven't had any more. How, why do we not have any more choice districts? Why are there not schools since 2016 that have amazing programs, STEM programs that have grown since 2016 that we want more of New Jersey students to have an opportunity to participate in? I'm looking at, we're located in 19 counties. If you live in Essex or Middlesex, you're really out of luck. Maybe you could go over to Somerset, but if it goes to, there's more applications than seats, goes to a lottery, that poor kid in Middlesex or Essex isn't going to get that opportunity. Since 2016, shouldn't we be looking at this program and saying, maybe we need more choice districts?
So let me first say, I think the choice program, albeit small, is, I think, one of the crown jewels of our great state. You know, the ability to provide students and families robust opportunities between choice school districts, charter schools, and our traditional public schools is, I think, what makes New Jersey who we are and what we do. But with that said, the department does not set the regulatory or the budgetary agenda for the choice program. You know, we implement, you know, the governor's mandates and that of the legislature in doing so. And so, you know, I'd be remiss, Commissioner, if I shared with you, turned over to you. But we, we will continue to implement the program, you know, as the budget sees fit and as we are allowed to do so with the resources we have.
Thank you. So it is budgetary. The budget has established a certain allocation. That allocation has not increased since that year, therefore the program is not expanding.
So, so if I could ask, $59.9 million goes towards choice districts. If I am sending my child from Bridgewater High School to Somerville High School, because they have a great STEM program that would be perfect for that student, that the school that's sending doesn't provide any tuition? If I'm sending someone from Somerville to Bridgewater, that doesn't come out of the funding for the school district, their home district?
So we're going to get into funding, particularly, but Ms. Bloom can answer it for you now.
So if, let's go to the next slide and I think it will answer your question.
Thank you.
So to the, to the point you just shared, Ms. Berry, all, all choice school districts receive funding, you know, for students in their current enrolled year. The state of New Jersey, you know, through a separate budget, pays the equivalent of the district's local fair share per pupil, at the per pupil rate for each choice child. The resident districts actually keep the tax levy collected for those students without choice. The choice districts also receive a formula aid, such as special education aid on a per pupil basis. In addition to that, transportation aid continues to go to the resident district to continue to provide transportation to those choice districts, choice students, excuse me.
Did that answer your question adequately?
I guess what would answer my question adequately is if we had an opportunity to have more choice districts. I think there's such amazing things that are going on. I, I, it makes me, I'm disappointed by the fact that there might be an amazing program out there that meets the needs of a young person and they're not being able to access it because we're limiting the number of choice districts. I understand, it looks like there's regulations and red tape. Can the department say, you know what, we need to re-investigate this? We're looking at this chapter now, we're discussing this. Is this a good time to say, maybe we need to investigate more choice districts?
Commissioner?
Thank you. So we know that every school district and every, and each school has unique programming and course offering that truly helped that school to meet the needs of its current population. This ties in with residency. So when we talked earlier today about that, certain districts do allow tuition students to enter. The choice program was started on a smaller scale. And so to that, we continue to carry out that initial initiative by ensuring its viability. But until additional funds are allocated, we truly are unable to expand it. So while we want students to have the best of every option afforded to them, we also recognize that the small scale of this initially has not grown with legislative and gubernatorial support since that initial inception. And so for us at the department, we continue to advance homegrown innovation and we continue to ensure that every district is providing opportunities and curricular exposure to students. is providing opportunities and curricular exposure to students based on our recent approval of the nine areas of our standards that allow them to truly feel the innovation at home. We can always say someone is better, someone has this award. But I think that the uniqueness and what continues to propel our state forward is the fact that you're going to find incredible opportunities and learning experiences in every school across our state. So I think that's the best way I can answer it at this time.
Dr. Bennett. Ms. Bennett, I beg your pardon.
Thank you. So it sounds like because of finances, the program has not expanded. However, do you have information that you might put before the legislators, put before the governor, and show the impact of those young people who started? And they're your ambassadors. You know, I will always say, if you want to know if a school is working, talk to the kids. Because they're going to tell you. It's not going to be fancy, but they're going to tell you what's good. They're going to tell you the benefits of it. And so if something, as my colleague is saying, if something has such significant potential, we need to perhaps explore, how can you share what's gone on from inception up to the point that you couldn't add more choice schools and tap into the young people who had the benefit and put that before the people who make the decisions about the dollars?
So I think that that is a great point of view. It gives us great perspective. Our role continues to be one in which we execute and implement the vision, and we work to identify numerous successes. And so when you're looking to stretch $1, quite frankly, you can't address every need that you would like to support.
Right.
And so the pandemic particularly has caused us to truly reexamine the priorities and look at learning acceleration for all, the social and emotional learning and experiences for all, as well as universal pre-kindergarten expansion to give everyone equal footing. And over time, I think, once we find that we are at the levels at which we are most comfortable, we can begin to look at more specialized programming. And that's really what has led us to this. So the data has been shared. We continue to tout whether our success is. The wait lists continue to grow. We're very aware of that. And we can pick other areas across our state where there is great demand and few seats. But this is where we are right now. But thank you for that point of view. We will continue to advance it.
And Ms. Bennett, to the Commissioner's point, what I think the choice program has done, though, albeit it may be limited in scope, it's inspired other school districts to collaborate. And you can look all across the state, and across our counties. And I supervise the county offices of education. And you find school districts working, you know, amongst border towns, collaborating on programs and sharing students in an effort to provide more opportunities and more programs to kids because they're encouraged, you know, by the fact that they don't want to lose their students in a local district to another school, but they can collaborate with a partner district. And it serves several needs in being fiscally responsible, but also academically fitting the needs of kids. And so I can assure you that, you know, the choice program, while it certainly, you know, serves the need of a particular population, it also spurs innovation. And it creates the conversation to happen amongst superintendents and local boards around what they feel they need to do to retain their kids, to keep their programs nimble and strong. You look at NORC Public Schools and the fashion program that they have, and they just instituted. And there are schools, you know, neighboring districts who are working with the superintendent there to hopefully send their kid to that fashion program, which is simply amazing. So there are some really great initiatives happening statewide.
But again, the point of taking the Commissioner's point, stretching the dollar. If you have a great program, a fashion program, a STEM program, they require a certain amount of equipment. So Bernards High School, Ridge High School, Ridge High School doesn't need to have the same equipment Bernards High School has. NORC doesn't need to have the same equipment that Irvington has. They can maximize their dollar by having a great program, being amazing at a particular area that a young person may say, you know what? I'm going to travel from NORC to Irvington so I can be part of this program. I'm going to use the choice program to do that. And so I think that we, I would love, because we're introducing this chapter, we're talking about this chapter, it seems like a good time to have a conversation about, I get the fiscal piece of it, but how do we think beyond the box and say, there's value to this program? There's value of giving additional opportunities above and beyond to some students. But they can't do it, a single school can't be all things, those extra extraordinary programs. I want to see those extra extraordinary programs grow and thrive. And I think the choice program might be a model to being able to do that. So I, myself, would like to investigate, how do we, how do we maybe see about talking to legislators and look at this a little further? And I'd also like to know, how many people are on waitlist? How many people are trying to get into these choice programs? Because 2016 was a long time ago. You know, it might really be worth investigating and looking a little further into this.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
And so, yes, with that, we ask the help of the State Board members to speak with legislators as well. I think it's going to take all of us to help move this forward. So President Goldenberg, if we don't have additional questions, we're ready to move on whenever you want. Please.
So now, let me go through a history of Chapter 12 as a regulatory chapter itself. The choice program was originally established by the State Board of Education back in October 1999 as a five-year pilot. As a result, the Inter-District Public School Act was then followed by the legislature in 2000 and expired in 2005. The Inter-District Public School Choice Act was then amended back in 2010 to expand the program to additional school districts. The rules were amended in 2012 to align with the revised statute. The rules were readopted without amendments effective April 2017. So this brings us to today and the regulatory amendments that we are proposing to the State Board under these chapters for Chapter 12. Chapter 12 sets forth the applicable definitions, rules, and responsibilities of school districts to participate in the choice program, as well as the rules and responsibilities of the resident, or what we call sending districts, whose students leave to participate in the choice students, as choice students in the choice school district. So there are five proposed changes that we have. Number one, the first proposed change is to streamline and consolidate language in the chapter for clarity and align with the statute and for consistency with other chapters in the administrative code. In addition to that, we are seeking to align NJSA 18A 38-3 was necessary because the statute was amended to require non-resident students attending a school without payment of tuition, which is contrary to the school choice statute, which does not allow tuition payments for enrolled choice students. The amendment allows for the enrolled choice students who are temporarily unfunded because they enrolled in a choice enrollment cycle to attend that same district. The second regulatory change, in addition to the department, in addition to the department proposing to make clarifications to the process of the interdistrict school choice program itself. Specifically, the department proposes to provide detailed steps in which choice school districts' application review and lottery process is conducted. The proposed language will establish the order of choice applicants, which, with enrollment preferences for participation and placements on the waiting list as part of the lottery process, which was previously available in department guidance, but not in the actual regulation. The third change, the department is also proposing to provide detailed steps in student application timeline, also previously available through guidance, but was not put into the code itself. The fourth change, to ensure consistency with the underlying statute, the department is proposing to enumerate the requirements for the department review and approval of a sending district seeking to limit the student's participation in a particular choice program. More specifically.
There you go.
I don't know what happened there, sorry.
Good?
Yep.
More specifically, the department proposes new rules to allow the district board of education of a sending district who is seeking the approval from the commissioner or the commissioner's designate, a limitation for a limitation for a limitation on the number of students allowed to participate in a choice program to a maximum of 10% of the number of students per grade level per year and 15% of the total number of students enrolled in a sending district as specified in the underlying statute. And the last regulatory change, again, to ensure consistency with the underlying statute, the department is proposing new rules which will require sending districts to seek to limit student participation in a choice program to submit specific documentation to the commissioner or the commissioner's designate for their review. The resolution, they must submit a resolution adopted by the local board of education specifying the limit of the number of students enrolled in a choice district who may participate in the choice program. They must also submit supportive documentation, including, but not limited to, evidence of the choice program's impact on their local district. That may include the sending district's student enrollment, student achievement, diversity of the student population, number or quality of programs or courses offered in the actual sending district itself, the number or quality of services by the sending district and/or that they provide, the sending district's operations, and the sending district's fiscal conditions. And considering granting the limitation resolution, the commissioner will determine if the sending district had demonstrated the limitation, limiting resolution by several ways. Number one, it is in the best interest of the sending district's students. Number two, it will not adversely affect school district's programs, services, operations, or fiscal conditions. And lastly, it will not adversely affect or limit the diversity of the remainder of the student district's population who do not participate in the choice program. To reiterate, the purpose of these rules is to ensure alignment with the requirement in the underlying statute. And so as we conclude, I want to share with you the regulatory timeline. You know, we are here today for first discussion. Next month, we will share with the board second discussion and then proposed level adoption with the proposal summary and code published in April, with the final adoption by the State Board in August, and the adoption materials published in September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time for these two? Thank you so much for the presentation.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I would like to have the distinct privilege and honor of asking this board to consider a ceremonial resolution for our acting commissioner, Dr. Angelica Allen McMillan, who has recently announced her retirement after a lifetime of service as an educator. Dr. Allen McMillan, on behalf of the State Board members, I would like to tell you that we greatly appreciate all of your efforts and your service to the department in behalf of the children and students of New Jersey. We wish you a very happy and healthy retirement. At this time, I would like to read the resolution. Whereas, Dr. Angelica Allen McMillan has served with distinction as New Jersey's Acting Commissioner of Education from October 2020 to the present and is being honored for her tenure of service. And whereas, Dr. Allen McMillan has devoted her professional career to the betterment of public education, having previously served as a substitute teacher in Essex County, founder of Marion P. Thomas Charter School of Newark, assistant principal and principal in the South Orange Maplewood School District, assistant superintendent in both Irvington Public Schools and Newark Public Schools, and an interim executive county superintendent for Morris County, which is where I'm at. Whereas, Dr. Allen McMillan, a parent of three, also served on the Montclair Board of Education and volunteered as a PTA executive board member while her children were in elementary school, has served as a board of education member of the Morris County Vocational School District and as a trustee for the college, County College of Morris. And whereas, Dr. Allen McMillan took helm as acting commissioner of education during a time when schools throughout our state were transitioning to the return of in-person instruction in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic. And as such, she unveiled the Road Forward Policy Initiative to serve as the roadmap to identify and address the academic and mental health impacts that COVID-19 pandemic had upon our students and our educators. And whereas, Dr. Allen McMillan continued to champion efforts for educational recovery in post-pandemic world through efforts such as serving as the architect for New Jersey Partnership for Student Success, a multi-pronged effort designed to accelerate learning, build partnerships between schools and our volunteers, address youth mental health, empower educators, and promote universal preschool, implementing grants and programs to address student learning acceleration, strengthening the pipeline of school-based mental health personnel, publishing a school-based mental health resource guide, and launching the Enhancing School Mental Health Services Project. And whereas, Dr. Allen McMillan saw other major milestones during her ten years acting commissioner, such as the instruction of climate change across multiple content areas and the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, a return of full control, local control to Patterson Public Schools in January of 2021 and Jersey City Public Schools in 2022, a student art installation that helps students express their post-pandemic feelings through artistic endeavors and efforts to address the challenges of our teacher shortage. And whereas, Dr. Allen McMillan provided leadership for the department to take on numerous initiatives to foster equity, such as the development of resources and regulation encouraging diversity, equity, and inclusion, a pilot program and accompanying funding to encourage restorative justice programs in schools, encourage diversity in the teacher workforce through initiatives such as men of color, hope achievers, partnership to recruit and place men of color in teaching positions, and working across state agencies to establish guidelines to address bias in K-12 schools and discrimination in school discipline. And whereas, that after a professional lifetime dedicated to the betterment of education, Dr. Allen McMillan is retiring from her post as New Jersey's Acting Commissioner of Education. And therefore, be it resolved that it is both fitting and proper that the New Jersey State Board of Education express its gratitude to Dr. Angela Allen McMillan for her years of dedication to the service of our students within New Jersey and to her leading as an acting commissioner. And be it further resolved that the New Jersey State Board of Education hereby honors Dr. Angelica Allen McMillan for her service to the state and extends our best wishes for her success and happiness in all of her new endeavors. Thank you. So therefore, may I please, may I please have a motion to accept the resolution as read? Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Fatima Burnham Watkins. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm not going to take any opposed, I'm not going to take any abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, this is amazing. Thank you. Yeah, you have to get a picture with all of you, please. Stand here. You have to add more pictures, of course. It's over. You have to add more pictures, of course. Okay, right here at the center. These chairs, yes. I'll get it, I'll get it, I'll get it. Thank you.
I can take off the awesome beat down.
No, stand back, do this. Yeah, right, oh, right here. Right here. We need to get everyone in there.
I just want to say thank you. Really, thank you. The time and people are waiting, so.
So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I need to die in a die. Yeah, absolutely. So we had a very quick thank you, but would board members like to add anything this time?
Yes.
I believe Fatima, you're first.
Sure, I'll be quick. First, Dr. Allen McMillan, thank you so much for all you've done for students and teachers and families of New Jersey. You've led during one of the most trying times for our country, I mean, well, the world, and you did it with grit and grace and persistence, and we just appreciate you. I'll also be remiss if I didn't share that Dr. Allen McMillan and I, we share, we're both members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, where our principles are scholarship, sisterhood, and service. And I would just want to say, super proud that you have lived those out in this role. And so we just thank you for your leadership, and best wishes to you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Fatima. Anybody else?
I'll end it then by saying, thank you so much for your leadership, and I've enjoyed greatly working with you.
Likewise.
And speaking about all the major issues together, and we will miss you. Thank you.
I will miss you all. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. May I please have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. May I please have a second? Second. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion is adjourned. Thank you. So, yeah, yeah. So I'm going to ask, please, because we have public testimony, that we are allowed a ten-minute break so that we can have a quick rest, and then we'll re-adjourn.